No gap.
I'm in.
No gap.
I'm in.
Good evening. March 11th, 2020. I'd like to call a joint meeting between the Finance Committee and the Select Board to order. I guess first thing, Peter, are you set?
We're ready to go.
Since we have no...
Reveal.
We have no plans.
Probably do.
Okay, Peter.
Oh, I thought you'd done it.
Hi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
So, I guess before we really, really start this meeting, and I know Renee had sent out an email earlier to Dr. Biata. In the worst-case scenario, Mike, what are the contingency plans if stuff like this is told not to happen anymore before the town meeting and we still have business to do?
That's, I mean, I don't know how we could all... Someone's got to be there or operate remotely. I don't know how we could do it. We'd have to have a few people there so that someone can get the equipment up and running and people could call in, so.
So, is there any...
Worst-case scenario, we'd have to do it that way.
Is there any grace to still having to have a quorum here?
The question with that is, I'll ask Colton and Paige that, if that's something that... They're looking at different things like that with the governor's emergency to be able to waive certain things, and one of them is with the open meeting law.
Yep.
So, I'll confirm with her on that.
Yep.
Okay. And when it comes to town meeting, I mean, it's still two months away, so, you know, we've got time. But if town meeting was to be delayed and rescheduled, the selectmen can do that up until the time the warrant's posted, so basically 14 days before May 18. So, towards the end of April, if we were going to delay town meeting, that's when that decision would have to be made.
Is that calendar days? 14 calendar days?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Can I ask a question to that? So, I think the one thing that, if we have to do that, especially if we have bigger meetings, right, we're going to need some sort of technology, which we have the Polycom back at the other place.
Right.
So, I don't know, is it, like, can we follow up with Jason and team to see, can they support that here?
Sure.
We probably would need, I would think, at that point, like, a conference line? Do we have anything like that now for the town?
Does the Polycom have a conference line on it?
I believe it does.
Yeah.
I mean, you can, you can, you can bring in multiple people.
Yeah.
But I think you need a number where everybody can dial in. You know what I mean?
Yeah. And I'll see if Jason can set that up here.
Okay. Here over, probably, I think that room might be a little bigger.
Okay.
He's taking notes.
Okay.
Ah, fine.
I guess the other thing I just want to say, and I think I warned you, Mike, that I'd say it tonight, with, with us showing at this point a sizable deficit, and I know you're going to, you know, go back and speak with all the department managers, I'm not sure presenting, presenting budgets as if there's not an issue, the way we saw the other night, where, hey, I want to add this person, and I want to do this, and I want to do that. I'm not sure how realistic that is. I guess there has to be adjustments, but at this point, we're above $500,000, below $1 million in our shortfall. And I think everybody should really be thinking, unless there's a money tree somewhere, of where the cuts are going to come from, not how we're going to grow. Because I don't know how you make up that size of a shortfall.
Yeah, I think, well, the process right now, it's just those departments to let you know in order to operate the way they think they should be operating, what it would cost.
Yep.
And, I mean, then, obviously, but at least you know that, so people are aware, you know, what the money situation is, you know, because in order to operate the way we think we should be able to operate, this is what we need. But, so people are aware what the cuts are.
But I, I think the question the other night of, gee, if you had to make a cut, where would you cut, though it was asked maybe to the wrong department since there was nothing really to cut, but it's a very valid question.
But, yeah, I mean, when you look at it, there's only, like, a few major budgets, you know, police, fire, schools, highway.
Right.
But every other budget is so small.
Yeah, I, I take your point, Mr. Chairman, but also, I think, in past years, this is always the case. We're always deliberating budget requests that we know we're not going to be able to meet at this point.
Not to that size.
Not to this extent. Not to this extent. So, I, you know, I take your point. But, but also, you know, there's some elucidation in being presented a budget that shows, you know...
This is what we need.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, does give us a sense of, you know, the delta that we're faced, the true delta that we're faced.
True.
Because as they come before us and present us with those numbers, and we match them up to what the asks are, and we see the asks being reasonable, if we, if we determine them to be so.
Yep.
You know, it gives us at least a picture of just how bad it is.
And the department heads, when we come back with the balanced budget, they can come back too, when I present that and explain to you what impact that's going to have, so you know.
Probably, probably a great idea for that. So, unless anybody else has any comments, I'll let you take it over, Mike, and...
Okay. You have the draft warrant in your package and a score sheet. And the first budget that you have tonight is the town clerk's budget, and Lucia is here tonight to discuss her budget, her salaries, contractual salary increases, knowing the gap. And then, on the expense side, she's actually reduced her request for this year's budget. And then Lucia also does elections, and she can talk to you more on that, but there's a big increase there because she has the presidential election, the primary election, and the state this year is requiring two weeks of early voting. So, that's my topic.
Yes, two weeks of, Mr. Chair, two weeks of early voting, which is expensive. They do give us, the state does give us a small reimbursement, but it's probably going to be maybe $1,000, $1,200 on the early voting, you're probably looking at about $4,000. I've also, then we have the state primary in September, then we have the presidential election in November. I accounted for a special just in case the articles on the warrant, the town meetings, so I put it, I budgeted that also. And just so you'll know, the town meetings, there's no cost on the town meetings, everybody, all my people volunteer and checking in and helping out, they're volunteers. And I think that's about it.
So, where does the increased cost come in, like, two weeks of early election? What, what's the cost increase?
Put it this way, I use my, I have, I use my poll workers to check in. It's, it's not like we can check in the town clerk's office.
Okay.
So, I have my poll workers to check in, and so when you take, you take two weeks, it's all business hours, and they come in at eight and they'll be out by five.
Good.
And then, they, they are also going to require a Saturday, so...
Okay.
I, I should know this, but where is early voting...
Town hall.
But where?
In the lunchroom, in the kitchen.
So, is that then closed to the employees for two weeks?
Yeah, we'll be talking about, we'll be talking about that where it's two weeks. We'll see if there's an option.
It's not, it wants you to use your town hall.
Yeah.
Yeah, they recommend, and it is with interest because we have, we have the state systems, we work off the state systems, and we're right there to, in case there's any issues.
And how many poll workers usually...
I'll be, for the presidential election, I'll be using four or five poll workers round the clock. We, the first time of early voting, we had just over 3,000 early voters, and that was the first time of early voting, and I'm anticipating probably five or six now that it's very common, so...
Is early voting more popular than just mail it to man, I mail it back type?
Early voting, yeah, early voting is more popular, yeah, than absentees.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
Can we, since we shut the sort of meeting, we now we can't have assembly there, but can we do the voting there?
No, it's not going to work with handicapped people, but do it in the elevator. It would be ideal, it would be fantastic, but it's just not going to work.
You can do the lunch there, right?
Yeah, use for lunchroom.
It's eating in the selectmen's room.
All right, both types of...
Just Mike's office. It's your office.
Don't eat downstairs.
It's your office, for lunch.
Oh. I was going to say.
I'm just looking at the, your salary specifically, an 8% increase, is that, is there something there that we don't know? Is that contractual?
An increase, I got 4% increase.
Looking at, just what we have yearly on this...
Oh, that, that includes my salary, that includes my assistant's salary, and it is also allowed for a part-timer that I do not have. I've budgeted that in for the part-timer.
Right, just on the salary line here, it's going from 65 is the 2020 rate to 73, $7,300.
Lucia's assistant moves up a step this year, so she gets her 2%, and then whatever the step is...
I'm just looking at the department here. Department head's going from 65 to 70. Is that a contractual increase?
It's, I'm under the personnel bylaws, so I've got a 4% increase.
So, maybe we can take a look at that at some point, because it's not reflecting that kind of an increase here, it's doubling. And then I always go back, these stipends and longevity, pensionable or not pensionable?
Not.
They are not pensionable?
No, they're not. They are?
Longevity is pensionable.
So, it's like...
Sorry, which ones stipends are not and longevity...
No, they both are.
Both are? Is that across the whole town?
Yes. Overtime is not pensionable, but longevity and stipends, any type of other benefit, like car allowance or something like that, that's not pensionable.
So, I don't know if the actuaries have done anything like that, but over the whole budget, the whole town, for all those stipends and longevity increases, what's the, to the projected cost for the pension, if you want, the obligation?
Yeah, I don't know, I'd have to look at how that's figured in. I don't, I don't know if they have, the county has that, that they can provide us, but I can check with them.
Can I ask a question? Okay, Mike?
Yeah.
When we look at this for first now, are we comparing this across the state like other town clerks, for example?
We're very low.
Okay. And then, does it also take into account, like, certifications and things like that, or is that what the stipends were?
That's, Lucia receives a stipend for being certified as a, what's the title?
Mass municipal clerk.
Mass municipal clerk.
Is that the recent one that was obtained?
Yes, a certified mass municipal clerk.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Brad, do you guys need to call yourself to order, because...
You can call to order. I, I call to order. I mean, really...
Well, because you have, you have a quorum, don't you?
Pretty much.
For the record.
We'll bring it out at everyone's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Look, Peter, get the flag back out, Mike.
I won't leave. Probably I'm going to animate one next time.
Next is inspections. The physician, Chris Conne, Michael Seale. Chris has a staff of part-time inspector, a full-time clerk, and two plumbing and wiring inspectors, and also, why not, two, two alternates. So, yes, I have two full-time employees and five part-time, including three alternates. In Chris's budget on the expenses, there's a slight increase requested of $2,300. Next to the part-time inspector, the inspectors are required to attend so many sessions that put on overtime by the State Inspector Association over here in order to continue being certified.
Michael, Chris, again, just looking at the salary increase here, there's a 10% increase on the department headline item. Were we, is that a negotiation that happened, or, I know, we talked earlier, I thought the, across the board, it was going up 2%, 3%?
Yeah, that is still part of negotiations. Chris put in the estimate on the salary, and also based on area-wide salaries and all kinds, how the contract works out with the union on that.
When do we have any...
That's just, what's that?
When do we get an answer, like, when do we find out?
On union contracts?
Yeah.
Um...
Or on, on, on what that number needs to be?
When I do, when I'll do my budget, it'll be, it should be in there. All the contracts, I'm told, the unions have to be done by the end of March, beginning of April, well in advance of that May town meeting, so...
Paul?
Hey, Chris, I just have a question. The other supplies that was budgeted for $10,000 FY '20, you spent a little over $4,000 FY '19. What is that line item? And then you've only spent $157 for prices.
Yeah, that's for boardups, so if a structure fires, I have to go in or connotations, or we have to do, take down a building, I need a line item there so that I can dip into it without, you know. Then we put a lien on the property for the treasury's office, and then we cover those properties.
Oh, okay.
I was fortunate enough to get insurance companies to pay for some of those this year directly, so I didn't have to spend any of the time.
Okay.
And Chris, is there any more fun at, at our favorite armor factory?
There's a lot going on over there with EPA still, the feds are still out there. They're removing our oil at this point. They're looking to take down a portion of Building A, but there's oil that's coming underneath that, and there's a remote oil field line from the street, so they're looking there, and they're taking numbers in for that now, so that's, that's the next, that's what they're looking at now.
And is there any potential cost to us to tear down anything, or...
So, the money that was requested last year to do the demolition?
Yep.
I had a budget of about $500,000. I came under budget and on time, so I'm going to ask to revert the remainder of those funds into Building A, so we won't be requesting any additional funds.
How much?
I think a half, 41, 47, 40, something, something like that.
Why, why would we pay for that?
Because the federal government is asking us. They brought in 3.6 million to date, and they're looking to increase their spending level, so they're asking us, again, like we patented with them last year, for abatement of Building K, they're asking us to help them with the abatement of Building A. There is so much left in the bankruptcy funds, so the DEP is going to kick in the remainder, $22,000, and then that would help take that section of Building A down, and then they can keep going on their oil remediation. If the buildings don't come down, they're talking about capping and leaving the building, the oil underneath the buildings and then pulling out. So, we're looking to keep them cleaning the site up.
So, Mike, I imagine on our next meeting, we'll have a topic on this, because I personally am not looking to put any more of the town's money into that, especially when we're looking at a $600-plus thousand deficit.
That would be a request when we do the special, when we do the special town meeting warrant. It would have to be on there. And also, the environmental engineers are out there now, they've started the site assessment as part of a $100,000 grant we received to do a site assessment on the property to determine what contaminants are in the soil to be cleaned up.
So, at this point, there appears to be a lot of investigations going on, but there's really no, like, overall, if we were to do X, Y, and Z, or if they were to do X, Y, and Z in six months, in a year, in two years, this site should be clean. We're not even close to that at this point, are we?
The EPA has done test drawings underneath the buildings, they think they know exactly where it is. They will need the rest of the buildings down. We are applying for grants to take those buildings down at no cost to the town. Mr. D Giuseppe is, is working diligently on that aspect of it.
And Paul has also worked with Tufts University. They have an undergraduate planning program, they have a team that's working to look at future uses of the site and develop a plan.
Mr. Chair?
Paul?
Quick question, I don't believe it, but, what if we don't do anything? What's our exposure if we do absolutely nothing?
There's no financial exposure to the town.
Okay.
Just an environmental exposure possibility.
Because this thing could, you know, this almost sounds like it borders on a super, a super fund cleanup, because we're only done, we spent a half a million dollars to take a half a building down, okay? Now, to take the rest of the buildings down, I can't believe it's going to be much cheaper than that. And if the federal government is all of a sudden saying, gee, we need help, that's scary when the federal government looks at a town like Norton and says, we need help from you to do something that they should have done in the first place.
Can we tell them we're broke and we need their help?
Yeah.
Hey, we've got a million-dollar deficit, you want to kick in? Because we need help too.
No, I'm just, I'm just curious, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be six digits, no matter how we look at it from our end. It's going to be six figures. I can't see us taking down from anything for less than six, six figures.
We've removed the immediate hazard, the imminent threat that was last year.
Yeah, that was fine, and that cost six figures.
So, yes, the remainder of the buildings are substantial and then can stand, but at some point, they will have to come down.
Okay.
It is a blight, we're looking to remove the blight, we're looking to do redevelopment. Mr. D Giuseppe, again, is working with Tufts to come up with a redevelopment plan to get it back on a tax basis. Right now, it's, it's not doing anything, so it's, it's a slightly dirty site, just the oil right now, and they cleaned up the other contaminants.
But I think it would take a lot of, I'm just taking a rough estimate, okay, $500,000 take down one building. Let's say it's a million dollars to take the rest of them down, and we have to belly up three-quarters of a million dollars to do it. That's going to take one hell of a lot of tax revenue over a lot of years to make up for that.
Well, that, that's why we, we're doing the site assessment now, because once the site assessment's done and they determine any severity, the severity of any contaminants on the site, then the hope is obviously that a developer will come in and tear the buildings down and develop the site. It's just they need to know what's there.
Amy?
I think my concern about putting any more money into this project right now is we keep saying, oh, it's okay, we're going to put a lien against it, but I think we can all be honest in the fact that if a developer did come to us and say, you know, we're interested in this site, but we're not interested in it with a million and a half dollar lien against it, what can we do? We would all pretty much say, all right, let's figure it out. And then we are on the hook for the money we've already spent, and we will never see any of it back. So, before we get in any deeper than we already are, I think we need to have a very honest conversation about what that is.
Yeah, and if we're moving forward with that, it will be when we do a special town meeting warrant, and then we'll be back here again for that, if that was going to happen.
Mike?
Is this industrial zone?
It is.
Okay, so it, so if a developer comes in, obviously, it would have to be some commercial enterprise?
Well, that's, that's what we have the students from Tufts looking at. Could it be a mixed-use development? I mean, off the top, you would say you would look more to residential in that area, but if it could be a mixed-use office space and retail and apartments, that might...
They'd have to change it.
Right, right.
Okay.
But that's what we want their study to give, give us some idea on that.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, but I'm just curious, maybe I missed it, but I'm not sure how I understand how we're investing resources in investigating the site and having students make up site plans and have the EPA investigate, looking at making the land whole, if that hasn't been voted on yet.
Can I, can I just clarify the role of the students?
Yeah.
They're, they're doing a very limited function. What they're going to do is work, they're going to, we want to reach, we're going to reach out to the public and ask the public, what would they like to see there? That's about the extent of what they're doing, and that's going to then feed into, I need to work with the mass development organization to, they have technical assistance programs where they will pay for consulting services. So, the work that, that Tufts will do will feed into what we call feasibility study, which actually then gets into the specific details of site planning and things like that. So, we're not there yet, we haven't, mass development hasn't announced that, but they do it on an annual basis.
I guess to simplify it, it's not to go, we're moving in a particular direction, and that decision hasn't been made yet.
Right. I mean, right, all we're, at this point, all we're doing is we want to work with the community to see what would they like to see there.
Was someone's doing some kind of slight, slight assessment?
They're doing assessment of the contamination, which was part of the grant we recently received, $100,000. All they're doing is looking at what's, what's in the ground, what, what contaminants are there.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Next budget is conservation. Jen, personally, you know, the conservation agent is with us, and if you look at the salaries, you may look at it and say, well, why did it go up so much? Because last year, Jen had a part-time person, everything, full-time halfway through the year, so that's one of the discrepancies in the salaries. So, Jen, it's just Jen and her clerk and position full-time people in the department, and the expenses of...
Yes, we didn't ask for any changes other than the contractual obligations.
Quiet. Walter?
Since there was nothing more pressing, can you tell us anything about the status of eighty-three?
Yes, I just got a number of estimates in for some more renovations that will be done to the capital funds that we had already received. And just finalizing some of the last-minute paperwork and procedures for the season.
Have you had any groups in yet?
Not yet, but I did have somebody email and say they'd like to have scouts there.
Mike?
This came up earlier when we were at the fire, when we were present. Now, it seems unusual for me at the Conservation Department to, to be running a camp, more or less, and with the revenues and the buildings and that sort of thing. Is that done common in other areas or?
If the property is conservation, then the other towns do that as well. So there's two different kinds of recreation. There's active recreation, there's passive recreation. Conservation Commission does passive, so hiking, nature trails, camping, things like that. Active recreation is more about ball fields and like the pool. So they're two legally separate types of recreation, not commonly known, but they are legally different. And the grant that we received to purchase the property was for passive recreation. So it does need to stay under mass general law and to the grant agreement as conservation. But it's really just trying to set up programs similar to the way we do it or have done monthly programs on the rest of the property, so hikes or beauty trips, nature walks, things like that. So the property will go through the Conservation Commission.
Jen, can I ask a question? I know you've talked previously in the past about not having an additional resource from something that occurred years ago and needing that to be able to apply for grants and stuff, is that in here?
Not having, I just couldn't hear you.
Not having enough resources, like to hire another, another resource, is that, is that part of the proposal?
We did not ask for any additional staffing. Would certainly help, but we're not.
Thank you. The next budget is animal control. And the positions in that budget are the animal control officer and part-time animal control officer. And the expenses, slight increase from twelve thousand seven hundred to thirteen thousand three twenty-eight. Both were fortunate to have two good qualified animal control officers who are very committed. Brian does a great job. Next is assessors. Denise Ellis is here tonight from the assessor department. In the assessor department right now, Denise has herself and another full-time staff person and a part-time staff person. And they've obviously been doing a great job. If you look each year at the new growth, we've gone from about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year to approaching a million dollars a year. And a lot of that's due to the efforts of Denise and her staff going out and making sure that all the properties are properly assessed and it's really paid off. So Denise's budget, as I said, with the salaries, it's just the staff people and any contractual increases. And the expenses, there's a slight increase, the main thing on the contracted services because Denise has three or four major ATV cases this year that she's anticipating that she's gonna need legal help on. So we have a tax attorney that specializes in that field that would work with Denise on that. And did I just say ATV? Why don't you explain what the ATV stands for?
The ATV is the Appellate Tax Board. So when the new values go out and people are not happy with their values, they can file for an abatement. This whole process, if my board denies the abatement, then their next step would be to go to the Appellate Tax Board. They pay a fee to go there, and it's just to defend our values. So when it comes, so residential are pretty easy, I can do those on my own. But when it comes to commercial, we have a lawyer, we don't use town council, we have a special lawyer that works for the ATV, and she works with all our commercial properties. And with her, most of them will get dismissed because she's working with their lawyers instead of going into the ATV, but I still have probably two or three that I need to go in for.
Is it dismissed totally or? If I'm a commercial property owner and I'm disputing, am I going into that hearing saying it should be worth X? And that's where?
Yeah, so, yeah, you, you'll be saying, oh, I think it's this much, and we say, no, it's this much.
So?
So if we can't come to a, if we can't negotiate something, like right now I'm trying to negotiate with one of our commercials properties, if we can't get into a negotiation, we'll have to go to the ATV.
So, okay.
Because we don't wanna give too much out, you know, we wanna keep as much tax dollars as we can.
Right.
So from there, if we can't come to an agreement, then we'll have to go to the ATV and they'll have to make a decision.
So if you're saying it's worth a hundred, I'm saying it's worth fifty, we can get together and try to meet somewhere that we're both happy with without?
Without trying to get there, yes, which is ideal, but a lot of times you can't do that. And a lot of them don't wanna negotiate, or they're, they're firm on their value, and they'll try to be kinda firm on ours, as, you know, which is a gamble, so.
This could be a loaded question. How, how successful are we in, in winning?
So residential's tough because they don't really like the residential properties to come. But commercial, I haven't had to go yet because we've been, our lawyer's been negotiating with their lawyers, so it's been working out well. And hopefully, we won't have to go. So I have another residential one I'm going for next week on Monday, and we'll see from there, so.
And that's, that's the contracted services line item?
Yes. Any other questions?
Mike? It's kind of before, the amount of staff that you have, you can only do so many assessments. But if you had more staff, then you could do more assessments, and that would be a greater benefit to the town. So that's just another example of how, you know, we fall short in areas that, you know, that we should be, you know, pay more attention to.
Probably worth it, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it's actually, you'll be a moneymaker if you brought in more people, so.
So that, that is one of Denise's desires.
Yes.
Obviously, her part-time person is a twenty-eight-hour-a-week person, and Denise would love to increase that to thirty-seven and a half hours a week to a full-time position.
So if we did that, would that bring in that amount of money or more?
I would assume so, I would hope so, because we're out, we're out in the, well, I will be able to get out more
because I am actually training my full-time person to come out with me.
With the other person working part-time, I can't take her with me. So if I can bring her, we can get more properties done. Because we're working as a team, we can fly, and then we can get out there more and bring in more revenue. That, that is the plan, absolutely.
And the cost of that is eight thousand seven hundred and seven dollars a year.
So I would think you should make that up pretty easily.
But she's already at the benefit.
She's already at the benefit.
Right, so it's only eight thousand.
Right, and she doesn't even use the benefits.
And, and based on what you submitted, what, what's the issue with the condos?
So a lot of our complexes are incorrect. The square footage, you know, like I just fixed Red Mill this past year. We had a lot of issues with their basements, their square footage, all different issues. Right now, we are working in Godfrey. There are issues with basements, and that's pretty much what it is. It's a lot of them, their, their, their square footage is wrong because we have to go by, it depends on who, who inputted them at the time. They've been out there for years.
Yeah.
And as I'm going through them and I'm inspecting them, I'm realizing that they're all wrong. Not all of them, but a lot of them are incorrect. Like, you know, like, for instance, Red Mill, you have like maybe, I don't know, they're called like an IP switch condo. Not all the IP switches were the same, they should be the same, right? So I had to go through every single condo, print them all out, go through the registry, find all their deeds, all their master deeds, go through all the master deeds. Then I had to get all the IP switches together, fix all those sketches, and go through every single one and fix them all. Took me about five months to get them all fixed.
And believe me, doing that at Red Mill Village is not easy.
Yes.
Red Mill Village is not that old. That boggles my mind, that they actually built something that they didn't have a plan for.
Well, you know, it's, it's three different, it was a weird complex to begin with, the way the whole thing was set up. But, you know, because you have your single-family ones, and then you have the, you know, the attached ones. But then you also had two or three different assessors going, you know, because that took so long that there was two or three different assessors doing it. And then every assessor does things a little bit differently. And that's what I found was the problem. Some were measuring them, some were going by the deeds, so those are the things that I'm fixing, because everything should be the same. And we wanna be fair.
Yeah.
So, and that's my job.
Okay.
So I'm trying to get everything fixed. So every year, I'm working on one or two complexes to make sure that they're correct, along with, you know, all the other single families.
My boaters.
If you had a guess, percent-wise, how many more situations like that are under town?
I don't think there's gonna be too many because we're working on Godfrey now, and that's not a major problem. But, and then I fixed one, I fixed two of them last year, and the other ones I haven't gone through yet, so I really don't know.
So in the, in the Red Mill?
They're, they're all set, they're done.
Right, but what was the increased tax revenue, based on your corrections?
I don't know, some went down and some went up, so I don't, really don't know what it was, to be honest with you. But, so they all actually did go up, most of them did go up because of, they have low ceilings there, so they can't finish their basements, and we had them in as crawl spaces, but technically, they're not crawl spaces because I can walk around in it. So what I did with that complex is I put a new code in for a low ceiling. So they're not a full basement, but they're not a crawl, they're in between. So they all actually went up in their assessments because I fixed them all, and I made them all even. And I'm doing the same thing at Godfrey.
Any idea of the dollar amount?
No, I, I really didn't look at the dollar amount, but they all did increase, so we got a lot of phone calls from them this year, quite a few, so. But hopefully, they're all set now.
How often can someone dispute their tax bill?
Once a year. So you have from January first to February first to file an abatement. Unless it falls on a holiday or a weekend, then it's following Monday, whatever it would be. If they miss the deadline, February first at four-thirty, they're done for another year. That's all state-regulated.
Okay, so can the owner of, say, the Great Woods Plaza, they would need to wait until next January to argue their assessment if Roach Brothers, which is leaving, is not filled?
Right, so what they will do, because they do every year,
Yep.
is they'll file for an abatement, so.
They do every year?
They do every year. But again, then the lawyer works with their lawyer, and it's usually dismissed. Next year, if, you know, if they don't fill that spot, most likely, they, they may get an abatement. We'll have to wait and see what happens, but who knows, we'll see, I don't know. Hopefully, something will go in there pretty quick, which will be ideal for everybody.
Right. Walter?
So I'm curious then, so the usage contributes to the assessed value, not just the square footage or the area of the land?
And for condos or?
Well, you said the, like the supermarket.
Oh.
When that goes out, the owner will have a smaller?
So, yeah, so we, so we look at their income and expense forms. So obviously, they're not gonna have any income for that property, so they can, you know, file an abatement, so we have no income coming in. We'll review all of it, and then we'll have to go from there. But yeah, it does, it does affect it. You know, it's all about the vacancy rate and the cap rates, and we have to go through that whole formula.
So this happened down McCape once. So if, if Roach Brothers moves out, but someone else leases the space but never moves in, is that considered vacant or leased?
Well, it's a lease, so it's, it's full.
Okay.
It's being used, as long as there's a lease or something. Makes, I mean, they'd have to prove that there's no income coming in, they have a lease, then, yeah.
Right.
They're all set.
Walter, why did you ask that question? I'm just curious, what does that mean if they lease it and then don't use it? What, did you foresee a use of that example of that?
No.
It's a technicality.
Oh, okay. It's a technicality that it's leased, but it's vacant.
I see.
So how do you consider that?
But they're paying their lease, so that's income. So it doesn't matter if they use it or not.
And it was done down McCape by one of the competing supermarket chains to make sure no one else moved into that spot.
Yeah, I've heard of that before.
To force you to go to their store, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.
Next budget is the treasure collector, and Catherine Van Dyne is here tonight. And Catherine has several budgets that she can, I'll see with you. The first is the treasurer's budget, and you can look on the salaries. Catherine has herself and three full-time staff people under her. And the salaries are just contractual increases. And on the expense side, Catherine was able to go down slightly in the treasure collector expense item.
Yes, when we changed over to Harper's being, payroll being kind of virtual, the price actually did come down. I was surprised, because last year I thought it was gonna go up going paperless, but it's actually come down. So hence a, a pretty good decrease in my overall purchases. So I have decreased my budget, to answer your question.
And the tax title, same, forty-five thousand dollars. And tax title is going after?
Yeah, once I put a lien on the properties, the tax title line item is trying to either foreclose or work on getting the people to pay. And we've actually had a lot of success this year. Once my attorney sends them a letter, they pretty much show up and say, whoa, I didn't know I owed. So we've had quite a few of those. But I have foreclosed on three, I think, three properties already, two in the works, and they're ones that have been sitting on the books for a long time. So the hope is to, once we foreclose on a couple of them, to be able to quickly flip them and auction them off. I've already got interest, so.
How, how far behind do you have to be before tax title?
Only one year. So the bills that were due in May of two thousand nineteen,
Yep.
I did a tax taking on them in January, so now those properties are now in tax title. And then, but I don't start the foreclosure process for a couple of years.
So it gets into tax title, but then it kind of sits for a year?
A year or two, I try to, I try to work with people. The people that I just put in tax title in January have already received their fourth letter from me saying, okay, I've advertised you now, I put a lien on your property, can you, can you, can you pay something? And I've already gotten into payment arrangements on probably five of the forty or so that I took. So it's a pretty good turnaround. And then the forty-five thousand covers the actual advertising, which was like two grand. Then now the registry just went up on their fees, so every property I have to either put a lien on or take the lien off is now a hundred and seven dollars. So that adds up really fast.
Yep.
So I can't go down on that line item at all, and I won't be doing any work, but recording and, so.
And, and once you start a, an agreement with someone, is it, you know, one mistake and you're out again, or?
No, we really work with them. And we actually have a big property that we're looking to foreclose on, and we have tried and tried, but I think they're upside down now. I don't even know if the town's gonna be able to recover the money, so we'll see. We'll see, we've tried.
So for a situation like that, how many years has it been, on the?
So for a situation like that, how many years has it been on the one that's upside down?
That one goes back to two thousand and, it was two thousand and twelve, but I think it goes back even further. The problem with that particular property is they were in bankruptcy, so when someone goes into bankruptcy, everything stops. And then they went, they came out of bankruptcy, then they tried to go back into bankruptcy, so we're just about ready to foreclose on them. Problem is, we don't want to kick them out into the street, so that's where, that's where we're at. But within the next two weeks, we're probably going to be doing it.
And how many, how many are out there uncollectible?
How many properties?
I think you said forty, you, you...
Forty new ones, I looked at my list this morning, I think there's a hundred and fifty-six on my list, but some of those have been redeemed already, so it's probably about a hundred and forty properties right now.
Redeemed, they caught up, paid?
Right, when it, once, once they're paid, they come off my list, but they, they stay on the actual list for another few months. And then I eventually will take them off my list. But there's, there's quite a few on here that are on payment arrangements with me, and are making payments, so...
And what's the dollar volume?
The overall, the total principal balance right now is six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, if everyone came in and paid today. Now that's just the tax, that doesn't include my treasurer fees. So, that would be on top of that, and I don't track my treasurer fees until it's paid, because those change every minute.
Thank you.
Yep.
The next budget is tax title foreclosure, and that's forty-five thousand again this year.
So that's what we were just talking about, forty-five thousand.
It's printed twice.
Is it printed twice?
Yeah.
I don't know, I have it on the bottom.
It's on the bottom.
Oh, I get another forty-five thousand?
That was easy.
We need that six hundred.
See, I'm going to get that six hundred for you, take some of that, right.
The next budget is maturing debt, and for maturing debt this year, the request goes from one million five hundred and two thousand last year to one million eight hundred and ninety thousand this year.
Yes, and that was the, a big chunk of that was the school window project, because now we're paying that. That's a big chunk, as well as, that, that doesn't include the water sewer, right? Their debt, that's just my debt, okay, so we won't talk about that. And what else was the other thing? I need to get a printer that prints bigger, it's so small.
Or new glasses.
Yeah, these are new glasses, thanks Brad. Yeah, that's, that's the biggest chunk of it. But the police station fell off either last year or this year, I can't remember which one, so...
Catherine, what other projects that people might recognize are still a part of this, besides the school window project?
Well, the other, a lot of the high school reconstruction is part of that, the Somneys, a bunch of, a lot of it is school.
Okay.
And then we have a few land acquisitions that we've made that, but they're very small. The Daggett-Crandall land was purchased back in two thousand fourteen. There's one from two thousand and four called Slattery, I mean, some of this I inherit, what is it?
Slattery.
I can't even say it, I inherited a lot of this.
That's where the water is stored at.
Yep, and, I mean, those are the big ones, a lot, some of the other stuff is really small. We have a small loan for the Campy Doo, but we only borrowed originally a hundred and sixty-three thousand, but that is part of it as well. And the newest borrowing would be the LED street lighting. We borrowed three hundred and seventy-three thousand back in December on that one.
And they were on my street this week?
There you go. And actually, that's a short-term one, that one, that hasn't been final borrowed yet.
Can I ask? All right. Go ahead. I was going to ask the opposite, you mentioned they had some drop-off, you know, some insurance cut. Are there any big ones coming up in the foreseeable future?
Any big ones dropping off?
Oh, any, anything dropping off would be...
Little ones.
Eight hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand dropping off somewhere?
Lake Winnicott's dropping off in two thousand twenty-one, but that's little.
The whole lake?
The lake's gone, right, yeah, that must, that must have been...
The Mansfield Ave property, that drops off in twenty twenty-two.
What's that one, Mike, is that the one we bought for their brand?
Yeah. School computer hardware, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, see, most of the, most of them are twenty, thirty years when we borrow, so it takes a long time to mature. And my sheet isn't big enough to keep going. I'm out to twenty forty, though.
So, with the, with the, overall the rock and rates, do we ever refinance anything?
We, right, yes, actually, I was going to mention that, that this might be the year to at least look at it, but there's many factors, because if it's going to cost too much to issue, it kind of doesn't make sense. So I am in contact with my fiscal advisor, and I will have that discussion with her, since I know the rates have come down again. Plus, I also got an email recently stating that municipal bonds are in high demand right now, because they're stable. And they're going to get paid, you know, so, I mean, I get calls all the time from people who have Norton's bonds in their portfolios, and they call to make sure they're going to remain in their portfolios, so it's, it's, it's nice. And our rating is very well, you know, very good, so we usually do get the best rate out there.
When we have the, when do they look at the rates again, or our bond rating, I'm sorry, when do we get...
We just did it, so it's usually only when we go out to borrow. So unless we're doing a big borrow, which I don't foresee that, hopefully.
And what are we at now?
Double A plus, no, double A, double A, I want to be double A plus, or double A.
Steve, work on it. Is it possible to get the listing of the, that makes up the detail of this?
The debt?
For the debt, oh, you want a copy of this?
Not the whole thing, I don't need the depreciation schedule, if you will, just kind of... I'm thinking of the original balance, the maturity date, the start date.
That's this.
Without, but that's going all across, I don't, I'm not looking for the individual detail.
You want it from one year?
I like to know where we are snapshot in all of our payments, what year we're in.
Yeah, that's that one, okay, gotcha. This doesn't give you the balance, though, it just, just tells you what this year's debt is.
This gives you the date of issue and the amount of issue, and then it will let you know what we're paying.
That's fine.
Can we add the balance on to that?
And it gives you the date that it'll be paid off.
The balance, no, the balance isn't on there, I thought that was...
No, because it's... Yeah, that's, that's just, we, I, I would have to manually do that.
Why don't I get you this, and if you want something else?
Okay, thank you.
I might be able to get my fiscal advisor to help with what you're looking for, she might be able to get that for me. She's got all that in her computer.
Okay, and how many, how many are on them, how many are out there, twenty, twenty, thirty?
How many loans?
Yeah.
A lot of it's water and sewer.
Yeah.
Just in general, I'm just thinking how many, if you had a key, the entries are coming down for...
Isn't that in our book?
About twenty for the town, and then there's quite a few for water and sewer.
Thirty-six or so, okay, okay.
Can you make sure this month we get that too, please?
And the next part of that is the interest.
Yes, because something, something about... I took it off when I paid one, something about...
And the question on the interest. And then the next section Catherine handles is employee benefits. Contributory is Bristol County Retirement. And the next section is health insurances, and then Medicare.
So the health insurances come down just a little bit, because our estimates for last year were a little bit higher than what the rate came in at, and also the enrollment. So, this year, we're, we're still estimating what the rate is, because we don't have the rate locked in just yet for the, this year's insurance, but we are estimating it to be less than last year, so there's a savings there for health insurance.
When do they lock that rate in?
Soon.
How soon?
Within the, I would say, what, the next month or so.
Definitely this, this couple of weeks.
The rates are just coming in now.
Where's the, sorry, 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 where's, where's the savings? I'm looking at, you know, medical insurance, eight point two million...
Yeah, that was last year.
Will you see other personnel services, it went from eight-four to eight, eight-four seventy?
Three ninety-five for total?
Yeah.
Oh, so it's the copay that, it's down to zero? So we're not doing any more copays?
No, we have that in, like, a reserve fund for the...
Right, so, I'm looking at the, if you look at the total, it went down, but...
That's because the two thirty-nine came out.
But like, two thirty-nine came out, like, like, if you look at the medical insurance, it went from eight point two to eight point three six five. It's an actual increase, I mean, the, the total went down, that's because you zeroed out a whole, a whole copay thing.
Right, and I had emailed a question on this. Because I, because I was wondering why this went from two thirty-nine to zero. And James responded and said that this is actually in a separate account, and this two thirty-nine balance just rolls forward.
Correct, it's in the, it's in, it's in the bank.
Right, so, his response was basically, we probably shouldn't have shown it as a part of the budget like this, so that's why they took it out, but that money is still there that will be used.
Right, but like, but it looks like the budget went down and it didn't...
But it didn't.
It went up.
Yes.
Right?
Probably went up slightly, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's why I was confused with the silver down.
We'll see how that ends up. Hopefully we have something there that can help us out with our budget.
And if we're in the middle of contract negotiations, is there any, you know, talk in those negotiations to pushing more of the cost onto the...
Just asking, not advocating.
There isn't, all our, all our insurance negotiating is a separate public employee committee that's outside the contracts.
Okay.
And that's where, one of the things we're looking to do is, our health group has put in a high deductible plan, so we're looking to add that as an option, especially for someone that's younger. It's a high deductible plan with a health savings account attached to it. And the town would contribute something into the health savings account, but the cost of a plan is so much less. And it's good if you're, especially if you're young and you're healthy and you're, because you can put that money into that account, it stays forever, you know, until you have to use it, and if you don't have to use it, it just keeps building up. And you can use it for things other than health, but if you do, you have to pay a penalty on that, plus income tax. When you retire, if you have a health savings account, you can use it for anything without paying the penalty on it, but you have to pay income tax on it, if you use it for something other than health.
Mike, if it gets that far, that would be expensed here, the town's contribution, if you will?
If we pay into the health security account, that would be in the other line item, the other account, where there's two hundred...
So it's the similar...
Yeah, with that copay.
With that copay, before it would be in the...
And the group that we're aligned with, which towns are in that group, and do we get our own experience rating?
Uh, no, it's a group experience rating, that's why we think our rates are going to be good this year, because we lost a couple of towns with bad experience rates that left, so...
Left to push them out.
So it's us, Rainham, Plainville, Seekonk, Rehoboth.
Dyton? No, it's one of the school districts, what's that school district? Southeastern or something.
Yeah, there's a, there's a collaborator with something.
Southeastern, we don't technically...
Down, down south of us, I forget the name, but now they're in it. Who else?
Missport? Or Bayonne?
Bayonne, they may be out.
I think they're out.
How many people are in the group, roughly?
I don't know.
I have no idea.
Are there like, competing groups, or is there ever an effort to just keep growing the group? So therefore the bad pieces are get...
We would like to grow the group with towns with good experience ratings, sure. It's, it's not easy to move around, like, Easton left the group, and they went to the GIC. And their rates skyrocketed this year, they went up five to seven percent this year at the GIC, so...
And they left thinking that they saved money?
That, they must have thought they'd saved money, I don't know how they're doing on that. But, as far as groups, it's hard to move into another group, because you have to buy in. You can't just move in, you gotta kick some money in and move into another group, other than the state. My concern with that is the towns with the bad experience rating, you gotta go in the GIC. With GIC, that's probably why their rates went up five to seven percent.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
No, you don't want to see Clarkson? No, that's good, that's my bedtime.
No, she, keep going, this is early, this had to go.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm all set. Sorry.
Thank you.
The next budget is unemployment. Got the unemployment at eighty thousand dollars, and we'll look at that, we could even lower that and put it back up in the fall. And then miscellaneous is gas, oil, and diesel. And we're, we're holding that at level, and hopefully the oil prices stay the way they are, and gasoline prices stay the way they are for a while, looking good. Then the insurances themselves are all listed, the next workers' comp, Medicaid, reimbursement expense, and all the other insurances that we have throughout the town. And we're looking at a round three, the, the highest would be five percent in our insurance increases, so slight increase from six hundred and twenty-nine thousand five eighty-five to seven hundred and six thousand three hundred and ten in our insurances.
What's, what's package policy?
Package policy is our insurance on all the buildings.
So what's the driver on that rate increase, on the, on the package, package policy?
Just values, buildings going up, and it's just based on what experience is not necessarily here, but the insurance industry has had as a whole this year in the country.
Is this all buildings in town, Mike?
What's that, yes, all buildings. And then we just have, we carry deductibles just in case. Next is border health. Chris, who's been very busy recently with something on... Chris has his staff, this is himself, he's himself, and a full-time clerical person, and a part-time assistant.
And a part-time, well, in this budget, that's it. Actually, I also have on this budget the animal control, but I have it for animal inspector. So through my office, we pay him as animal inspector.
With that, that's, that job for Brian is out inspecting stables, kennels.
So basically, I don't really touch my, my budget too much. Payroll-wise, it's just contractual, and then expense-wise, I haven't touched my total expense in years, so...
Any questions on the health? What's, what's the professional services?
Professional services is usually if we have to hire in a consultant on a project. The twenty-seven hundred we did back in the year before, the year before last. The twenty-seven hundred we did back in the year before, the year before last, was for the consultant services quarry. A site we were evaluating on Maple Street with hazardous waste dump. So we have to hire any engineer for him to help us with that.
Steve? Just looking at the, so I know you say you don't touch it, but telephone communications, lab testing, there's no expenses the last several years, is that just kind of a placeholder in case you need something?
Lab test, I kinda have to have on, so I'm, and the telephone expenses, I've been lucky enough to get federal government to pay for our cell phones. But it's not a guarantee it's gonna stay forever, that's why it's kind of been there as a placeholder. I, I don't spend money that I don't need to spend, that's my, my point, so, I mean, yes, it's a placeholder there, but I don't know if they're ever gonna just say we're not gonna cover your phones anymore, makes sense. Being twenty-four seven is the reason why they're covering it right now, but their budget, you know, they could all of a sudden decide that they don't, don't want to have the budget credit.
Any other questions on that? The next budget out of Chris's department is the public health nurse, Donna Palmer is our public health nurse, I don't know if you've ever had a chance to meet Donna. Donna does a great job working for us in the schools and over at Reed College, and we're, we're very fortunate to have her. And that's the only staff in that, obviously that position, and the expenses are level.
So, Mike?
Yeah?
Question on that, does she actually provide services, or is that an administrative type role?
No, she provides services, flu shots.
Uh, she's also tracks Maven, which is, don't ask her what that is. It's essentially a reporting site for the state, coming in very handy right now with coronavirus, but. Basically, if somebody gets tested for coronavirus, it gets posted on the air for us to investigate. And we do kind of do the legwork for the state as far as where have they been, where did they travel to, who have they been exposed to, so that's what we've been very busy with. That's the, basically, the extent of our involvement right now with coronavirus, but that happens with all clinical diseases, TB, that type of thing, so. She also does host, site visits, host visits, she'll deliver TV medications, she's done a lot of flu clinics, that type of stuff at the schools.
Yeah, she always tries to convince me to get a flu shot when I take the kids to get a flu shot. I always politely decline.
I, I will say this, and I've said it every time her name comes up, she's the hottest worker for us in the chain.
Knowledgeable.
Yes. I don't know why I'd do it without her.
Does she know that?
I tell her every day.
Absolutely.
Should bring her to a meeting sometime.
Donna was with us today at the high school to.
Yeah, so we met with Dr. B and some of the school faculty, members of the school committee to discuss obviously coronavirus and try to be prepared for what may be to come. Right now, we're luckily, we're not overwhelmed with cases, but that could change by tomorrow, you know? So we're just trying to get an idea, none of us have been through this type of thing before, so we're trying to get an idea of where we need to be. And putting our heads together and coming up with a solution, talking about what do we take if we had to close schools? What should we do with current events that are already planned, you know, that type of thing. And so Dr. B and I have decided that we're gonna work on this on a two-week basis, because things change quite frequently. We're obviously gonna keep communications in between meetings, but every two weeks, we're gonna meet and discuss what we've gone through thus far, what do we need to change, and move forward from there. So I think it's, so far, so good, and we hope that it doesn't get much worse.
Hang on, quick question, what about the senior center?
It was a discussion today as well, it was a discussion today as well, I had a three o'clock phone conversation with the, a phone conference with the state. Their recommendations are that anybody over sixty is high risk right now, and that we ought to be considering, sorry, Mike, we ought to be considering.
And Brad, we're gonna keep asking.
Not calling them to a group session type atmosphere, so I was gonna talk to the director tomorrow.
Yeah, because we have bingo, where you fit forty people in that closet. It's an oversized closet.
Yeah, exactly, and she had another event with the seniors, I guess, next, the seniors.
There's some coming.
And seniors.
Yeah, they cancelled that one, that was with the high school.
Today, she told me she was gone.
Oh, the St. Patrick's Day party got cancelled?
That was their St. Patrick's Day party, I don't know if we cancelled that or not, but that's Friday.
And it's unfortunate, we were talking.
Probably gonna be cancelled.
We were talking before the meeting started about the snowflake social that they have every year through recreation, it's supposed to be Friday at the schools. But the schools don't want any events that are bringing adults into the.
From the outside.
From the outside to the building, so that's gonna be postponed, and hopefully.
Yeah, Mr. NHS was postponed.
Yes, and Mr. NHS was postponed, and now it's supposed to go to that, but it got cancelled, and now I'm here with you taking notes at the FinCon meeting.
So do I, do I wanna ask, are there any cases in town?
I probably don't wanna ask.
He probably can't tell you.
He can't tell you.
Overface, good job. That's.
I, I think you can tell cases, you can't, with any sort of V I R.
I'm not asking.
I don't have confirmed, I don't have confirmed, I will say there's, there's intrigue, there's investigations going on.
Presumptive.
I will say this, there, just to try to clear it up, it was discussed today at the meeting about a certain person working at the schools, that is a false. Story going around that she's working near sick. I just wanna make sure everybody understands that that has been discussed with the state, and everything is just fine the way it is, so I don't wanna go too much into it, but. I just don't like the rumor mill that's been going on with that, because it's just not fair.
Yep, I agree, Mr. Zoner, and people need to be, face the facts about this coronavirus, and they need to take care of themselves, and people need to move on in their lives, and they don't need to be afraid of coronavirus, right?
Chris, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I know a lot of companies have instituted like a self-reporting system, have we offered that to employees across the town? So whether or not like they've traveled to an impacted region, or they may have been exposed some other way, and then, you know, and I think about that more so, so that if they choose to self-quarantine, right, we're supporting them and whatever HR.
So Mike and I have been discussing that, we've been discussing a number of different things, that being one, we've also discussed the possibilities of what we're gonna have to do if town hall has to close, if we had to report, you know, if we have to work at home. You know, we, we've got a lot of things going on right now that I really couldn't give you a final answer on any of them, because this was just a lot at once.
Yeah.
But we are taking a lot of that into consideration.
Right, but hopefully the meetings will go on.
We did meet with all department heads and talked to them about how to access information from home, working with their computer at home, so.
Have you done any tests?
I was just gonna ask.
Tests to see if that works.
Yeah, so the employees are comfortable connecting and they know what to do, they have the information.
Charlie and our IT coordinator hooked me up with the VPN, and I, I used it at home, it worked fine.
Okay, have you done a breath?
Yeah, have, have you done a bra? Have you done a bra test?
We haven't, it's just started, we haven't.
If the system can handle it.
We're still in the early stages again.
And all departments have been instructed to use their wipes on their common counters, and when people are coming off, and we're gonna post something on the website encouraging people to do as much business online as they can, they can pay their bills online, they can pull permits online. And if they have to come to the town hall, feel free to go into our restrooms and use our hot water and soap.
Bring your own pen.
And they bring their own pen, a simple thing, I, I actually told the departments today, take the pens off the counter, hopefully you don't have to have people sharing pens, but, you know. Just, it's just a little thing, but you never know, and so, and tell people if they're sick not to go to the town hall, so.
Forward.
If you pay a bill remotely, is there a fee?
Yeah, there is.
Is there a talk about waiving or somehow dealing with that fee?
It's not our fee, it's the company that manages.
Fees to cover costs.
Company, yeah. Is that like Unibank or whatever?
Yeah.
Well, have we reached out to them saying, hey?
Yeah, it's their business.
It doesn't mean that they wouldn't.
That's how they.
Might give us a break, but they're not gonna give, take it away. They're gonna do it for my.
It's, it's worth investigating, I, I don't know what department would do that, but if we're trying to, you know, we want people to pay their bills, we don't necessarily wanna see them face to face if they do it that way. But I, I know when I've, when I've looked at, I'm like, I'm not paying a fee. And, and so I'll, I'll do it any other way, but.
There's a thing called the postal service.
It's probably about a quarter.
It's like a quarter.
The fee is more than fifty cents.
I think it's like two fifty.
Well, no. No. It's like fifty cents.
Is it fifty cents?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, the dogs, the dogs is like two fifty, plus three ninety-five for dogs.
There's one fee for if you pay using debit card.
Right.
Yes.
Right, if you put your bank info in, it's less.
So if you use a checking account, it's only.
Did they use a coupon?
So we even look at like a drop box outside, so people can just pull into the parking lot and put their payment in an envelope in the drop box, they don't have to come in the building and they don't have to interact with anyone.
Or use a stamp.
Right. I am solving those problems one at a time tonight. No charge, bring it all on.
You should charge a quarter.
So, I was just gonna say, thank you for the information, and if you guys need any support, I mean, I, this is like my job, my real-time job, so I'm certainly willing to come in for a sounding board and, and help with anything.
Thanks. The other thing I did forget to mention too with the emergency declaration, and part of the conference call today, there is gonna be funding released at some point to help us, so I'm looking forward to research and, you know. Pushing to get some money in to help us get some more supplies, supplies are still very low right now, as far as, you know, when we get, find a vendor that has hand sanitizer or masks, it's been nearly impossible, so. We're just constantly calling them, and if we can find somebody, we're gonna grab it, that type of deal, because it's just so few and far between right now. And a lot of that, I was saying the other night, it's caused by the panic, that's what's going on, and, and people went out and ate up all the inventory, and a lot of it for no reason at all, because they think the mask is gonna stop them from getting this bug, and it's not gonna help them.
So why are you looking for?
What's that?
So why do you want them?
I wanna supply them to the people that are sick if they need them, that's what I'd rather have them, because that's what they're there for.
The masks are protection, it's not for protection from it, it's for somebody who is infected.
Keep them from expectorant.
Do you want to talk the other part about self-quarantine now, if, if someone in the family, just to.
So it was before that if you were quarantined and you were even showing symptoms, you would be quar, you could quarantine in your house, in your, in your own room, and kind of keep yourself away from the family. Now they're making it so that everybody in the house has to be quarantined if you have symptoms.
If you have symptoms.
And your quarantine lasts for fourteen days, or at least until you can have two negative tests within twenty-four hours of each other. And that's when you can finally leave the house. If you're not, you know, as, it's asymptomatic for fourteen days, you have, you're done, and you've done your quarantine time and you're done. But if you are showing any kind of signs and you test and you test positive, you're there until you can have two negatives.
And everyone in your house is there with you?
Yeah.
It's not gonna be, I said this morning online, it's not gonna be the virus that kills my children, it's gonna be their mother.
It's gonna be their grandmother.
So question, if you got a call today and said, I think I might have it, can I get tested, do you have tests available?
So the, the, the state has received two thousand tests, expecting more. Thank you, federal government, but.
Yeah, what's our population?
Five million.
Well, they're not, they're not gonna ever have enough to cover everybody.
Nobody.
Right.
First of all, you can't be tested if you don't have symptoms.
Right.
Period. The, the test will not work, if you don't have symptoms, it will not be an accurate test. So you can't call and say, I think I might have been around somebody that had coronavirus and can I be tested, because that's not gonna work, you have to be sick.
While you're on camera, could you just go over what the symptoms are again?
So the symptoms are the fever, cough, respiratory distress, trouble breathing, or shortness of breath. Someone says sore throat is also starting to show up in them as well, they do not mention much for sneezing, although that's been coming up too. They didn't in the beginning, but they're now saying that it's, you know, it does include sneezing, but it's more the respiratory infection that they're.
Are they still saying the difference between this and the flu is with the flu, you have a runny nose, but with this you don't, right?
But now they're starting, they're not sure of that, they, there's still a lot of unknown even for the epidemiologists in Boston, they still say there's a lot of unknown.
I saw, I don't know where it is, but I saw a good grid today on the internet somewhere that showed a common cold, the flu, the coronavirus, and the symptoms and what are common and uncommon, I'm kinda trying to look for it now, see if I found it. There's someone, picture looking thing, I saw today, it was really good.
The CDC would be the best one. If you, yeah, if you go onto the CDC website, you can find information there, and the state is gonna be updating every Wednesday?
State's gonna, their, their website's gonna update every day.
Every day now.
At four o'clock.
We're gonna call and try to get some breath.
They're gonna do conference calls, at least with public health officials, every Tuesday. And I believe they're also doing them with the superintendents of the schools, he had mentioned that he was also getting calls from them.
It says fever, fatigue, body aches, cough, worsening symptoms for flu or corona, and for corona, it's shortness of breath, history of travel, exposure.
Yeah, right.
And then colder allergies is itchy eyes, stuffy nose, sneezing, but you're saying sneezing has moved over to the.
They're saying that they're not sure if it is connected or not, no, it, it's still up in the air.
So if you're quarantined, then someone must have to come to you to administer the test.
That was the other big question, right now, currently what's been happening is the people are driving themselves to the doctors, and the doctors let them in the side door and they tend, they tested them that way.
I know they showed last night.
I know they know that hospital has a tent in the parking lot.
South Shore Hospital did the same, you know, they set a tent up outside the hospital, because they don't want the people coming into the hospital.
There was discussion today that there may be a time when they're gonna require public health nurses to pull samples, which I'm not excited about at all, because she's over sixty, so I'm not excited about putting her in that spot.
We have some N ninety-fives, right? We do have some, I mean.
Minimal amount, yes.
They, they're putting a lot onto the local health departments, which.
They're reaching out for as much help as they can get, sorry, did you just?
Walter.
I think they're also, this is a finance committee meeting, but we've gone into coronavirus, but the one other thing I'd like to say is they, they're talking about testing a lot of the early flu samples from Washington, I don't know if you heard that.
Yeah.
Testing the early flu samples that were frozen.
Is a great time, time.
To see if there was coronavirus involved back then.
The New York Times has a great article on that, I was reading this morning, that, that they were doing a flu study in Washington State before the coronavirus broke out, and when it first started, before it had, anyone had died in Washington State, they, they asked the CDC, could we test these samples that we have for the coronavirus? And they're like, no, those people didn't sign up for that, you can't do that, and they would not let them, and they kept begging them, begging them, and they would not let them, so finally they just said, we're gonna do it, and they tested this one kid that had been in on February twentieth, and he had it. And so they went to his school, and he was in the high school, they took him out, and then they had to clear the school out and disinfect the school, and so they were begging the CDC to let them test the other ones they had, they had thousands of them frozen, and they said if they had let them do that in early February. And they said if they had let them do that in early February, it might have. I ran in some of that.
I would know, sure.
The red tape.
I thought I read somewhere that in Canada, they've now incorporated the coronavirus test into their regular flu test panel. So you get like that very quick response on anyone who they test for the standard influenza virus.
They told this lab, they told this lab in Washington State that, well, you'd have to be certified as a certain kind of lab to do that. You can email us, but we need it also sent to us in hard copy and it takes at least six months to.
Yeah, I think we're kind of past the point of all that.
So currently right now with the testing too, if you have flu-like symptoms and you didn't travel and you didn't meet all the requirements of being a person of interest or investigation, they'll test for flu first, both types. And if those both come up negative, then they'll test you.
So even if you're a person who rides, say, public transportation every single day or has an office in Cambridge right down the street from Biogen.
Well, that's different because you're part of, part of the.
Just asking.
Right, I agree. Part of the person under investigations detail is, definition rather, is extended time around somebody that's been tested and tested positive. So that's part of it as well. So if that was the case, you were hanging out in Cambridge at Biogen, I'm sorry to hear that, but.
I wasn't.
Anything else? Last part of the budget that Chris oversees is sanitary landfill. This is for monitoring on our cap landfill on Village Street. We're hoping that this will go away someday.
Yeah, so we do have a request to make this go away hopefully or at least make it just an annual testing, because right now we quarterly test, quarterly test the, let's get these two mixed up, the gas. And by annually, we test groundwater handling. This is all mandated by the DEP. We're hoping to, whereas it's gone quite a few years with pretty clean results, that we can get them to back off a little bit on this to save a few pounds of money. But until then, we have to, you know, continue where we are. So the request is into DEP for that and we're awaiting your answer. But that's happened twice so far and we still haven't gotten your answer. Very slow.
So we would expect if it wasn't quarterly, it was yearly, then that would be cut by four? Down, down, less than that, I presume, basically.
Yeah.
Thank you. Coming up, good luck. Coming up just a moment, you've all been waiting for the town plan of Paul Di Giuseppe. Right now, well, Paul's on his way up, but we could just skip to the next big budget. Zoning Board of Appeals, three hundred dollars.
Lots of questions.
Denied.
That's just for any advertising, though, they may have to do. All right, the next budget is planning. And the planning budget has Paul and full-time staff person. And then the expenses are level. Paul's been doing a great job working finally on a master plan for the town that hasn't been done since like nineteen eighty-something.
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, okay. And spent a lot of time on the zoning articles that he's gonna talk to you about. Any questions on Paul's budget?
Again, Mike, just, as I know Steve barged up two other times, what's up with the salary increase that is?
It's probably nine percent, is that just by?
Well, it's just a department request.
Department request?
It's not the town manager's budget, it's not our budget, so.
Oh, okay.
It's not, it's just a estimation.
But isn't that a contractual?
There, yeah, it would be, Paul was in a union, but there's, their union is administrative union. There's a salary range.
Ah, okay.
There's a couple articles that file about you talked about.
Well, I, would you want to switch because I don't have the remote clicker?
I would be happy.
It's, it's up to you and if not, I'll see how this works. This has been off for a little while.
Do we have any? We're just gonna use the one.
Maybe you can revive it.
There's something coming around?
It went down when the computer shut down.
Which article are you gonna be talking about first, Paul?
Can you look at the village center core?
Okay, Article twenty-three.
We'll see. Turn it back on. Skip the PowerPoint.
There's more. Is that it? All right, so who's sitting next to me tonight? Come on over.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, it depends. We're gonna ask you a series of questions. She showered, I can tell you that.
Yeah, my apologies, I forgot to bring my, the clicker for this, so. This is gonna be the first time I'm doing this particular presentation, so I haven't, I didn't have a chance to time it out, but obviously if I'm taking too much time.
And it's Article twenty-three in the law.
So this is, this proposed article that I'm really just gonna cover, there's two main things I want to just go over here. One is the purpose of this new zoning district and then hit some of the highlights of it. So this is a, let me just get this going. Okay, so there's real, there's two items being changed here. And I know one is Article twenty-three and the other is Article twenty-four, but I give them this together because one is the creation of a new zoning district, the Village Center Core District. And then the other change is to rezone properties along our village center near the green. So that way we get the new district and the proposal is to apply it on about forty properties. And so the purpose of the, of this district is to address what we've heard through our master, we did our, our village center vision plan for this area, which was, there's, there's a lot of good things that go on in this area. And I'll show you in just a minute where that is. But there are some improvements that could be made. So we worked on a new zoning district that really focuses on uses and designs that promote a walkable vibrant area. And so what those include are things like, what matters is, what, a lot is what goes on between the front of the building and the street. Because if you think of yourself as a pedestrian, that's a big thing, whether or not you have a building close to you or a building that's a hundred feet back. And so what you do when that space between is really important. One of the things we're also trying to take advantage of here is the water, or the sewer expansion that's going on currently. It's our hope that, and we're, you know, that we will see redevelopment and reuse occurring. In fact, Bog Iron is staying put because of the sewer issue. That was what, you know, they were looking for a year or more to find a location, partly because of septic issues. But when they discovered that sewer was going in, that changed the game for them. So they're staying put. So we want to be able to take advantage of that and put some new design standards in place for it. And again, this also implements the, the Village Center Vision Plan, which was endorsed by the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen back in June of last year. So this is the area proposed. And it's essentially from the Village Green over to Honeydew and then across here, this is the site of the proposed Cumberland Farms. And then some of the Wheaton properties here. And then right up, where you see number two and three, three is the, the library, the old library that Wheaton College owns. And the one next to it is the two homes owned by Peg Dooley. So it's about forty lots altogether. So, and just thinking about how we experience the place. You know, when you see a, you know, an aerial view like this, it's a really, from this perspective, it's a very attractive place, particularly with all the trees there. And, you know, when you look at the road, it doesn't look too, you know, too wide. But when you go down to the street level, it, it changes. You know, your perspective when you're on the ground, you know, cars, you know, zooming by. But again, this area has a lot of good things about it. You know, this is an example of where we have, you know, Walgreens, which provides very needed services. But it's, when you look at it, it's really designed for cars to come in and out. And you, when you go to Walgreens or the CVS, you're, you know, unless you're at the pharmacy line, you're not staying there very long. And so it's, it's tougher for people if you're trying to walk or bike to get through a driveway and then all these cars that could park there. But again, the, the services are good. We have a lot of good, really good local businesses. Here's Wendell's, Bog Iron across the street. But with a couple of exceptions, like Peg Dooley's House, the old library, which are beautiful buildings, these, most of it, it's just kind of lack of an identity. The buildings are there, but it's not, you know, it doesn't really have any distinguishing characteristics. Again, good uses. There's also limited opportunities for people to walk to this area and to gather. There are, with Bog Iron, Wendell's, people will go there and be there for a while. There's not that many of them. Of course, Norton House of Pizza, which is great, people will go there. I don't know how often they gather, when I go there, it seems like it's more pick up and go. And then we have some uses in this area that are specifically for automobiles. You know, you drop your car off and get it repaired. But if we're trying to get an area that's more for people. So, so what we're thinking of is how do you reimagine this area? And so this, the center, this Village Center Core District is looking at creating a, a village center that's really a walkable and vibrant destination. And so what we're doing is, I'm gonna step you through some of the highlights of the, what this district does. So other than four properties, everything here is owned currently Village Commercial. So I wanted to step through quickly what the difference is between the two of them. They're really a like-for-like category in certain respects. But the Village Center Core, and it's hard, again, it's about promoting walkable friendly places with gathering. And it, it's, I should also point out, this, the version you have here was very well vetted by the Planning Board on a number of meetings. So the, the version you have was actually endorsed by them a few weeks ago. So they went through and refined it. So, but again, this is about promoting a desire to see, when you think about mixed-use buildings, right? Where you might have residential above retail, that's what we're trying to get to. But it's also seeking to eliminate uses that are really just auto-oriented, like auto sales, gas stations. Now, on that point, we know we have a few uses that are already there that are auto-oriented and if they're already there, they're going to be allowed to continue to be there. They would just then become a non-conforming. There's only a couple, a few, three or four properties that we know of that wouldn't fit into this. But they can continue. And, you know, the only thing is if they were, if they were empty for two years, then they would lose their non-conforming status. So I had a call with actually a former FinCom member today who owns some properties and they're residential and mentioned that to him as well. Village Commercial, as far as the uses, it's much, it allows much more. And it certainly includes people-oriented types of uses, but it also allows all the auto-oriented uses as well. So gas stations, auto repair, drive-throughs. I think another difference is Village Commercial currently, we have what we would, what you call it, design guidelines, which are voluntary, and then we're adding more stringent standards for the Village Commercial. Yes, sir?
So if someone is non-conforming and they wanted to expand their business or they wanted to put a new building up, their, their business is doing well. Since they're non-conforming, does that restrict them in any way?
They'd have to go through the zoning Board of Appeals to get the variance.
But since they're non-conforming, they need a variance, whereas if they were conforming, in a conforming law, they wouldn't need a.
Correct.
So that does, that could restrict their.
It could, but again, there's only a few of them.
Right.
And there are, if you, you can expand the, you can expand a non-conforming use up to about twenty-five percent and not have to go through the CBA, so. But if it's a larger one, then, yes.
Well, we're on the non-conforming. Is, is, is the Cumberland Farms gonna be non-conforming?
If it's approved and it goes forward, I mean, they're, obviously they would be legally operating, but if this gets approved at the town meeting, then they would become a non-conforming use.
Isn't that amazing? We just, we just allowed them to come in.
Yeah.
And this plan, I know, didn't happen yesterday.
Right, but they're allowed to go forward under the current regulations.
I understand that, but if we know this, stuff like this is coming, why do we do this patchwork zoning?
It, well, I wouldn't say it's patchwork. They just happened to come in before we were able to rezone the property. This happens a lot, unfortunately.
But we knew that we were gonna do this.
Sure, and in fact, the Planning Board.
My only point is that we knew this was coming, okay? So before we allow somebody to come up with another proposal that makes a new business non-conforming, whatever that means, they're still gonna be able to operate, just like Speedway.
Right.
They're gonna be able to operate.
Well, Speedway is outside of this.
Oh, that's right, they're beyond it.
But I would also say that if there are uses that people don't want, then, you know, whether it's here or some other area, what it's zoned matters. You know, again, in that particular case, they came in with regulations that allow it.
Oh, I know that.
So.
I, I don't want to derail your presentation, but CVS, Walgreens, Honeydew, the gas station, Wendell's.
Bagels and Cream.
These aren't where.
All these things are gonna be non-conforming?
No, 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 no. Those will, the retail uses like CVS, Bagels and Cream, they're going, they're, they're.
But they have drive-throughs which are not allowed.
Right, so Honeydew, that's why I thought you were listening.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm thinking of all the things that don't fit the new definition and.
But the, but the drive-through is there.
I understand that, but it's non-conforming. So how, if you make this change, if the town makes this change, how many properties actually would benefit versus all the properties that are gonna exist and be non-conforming and therefore you're still gonna have this patchwork of? It doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Can I ask a question on that, though? So you put this in place, right, CVS decides, hey, we're closing up shop, right? Somebody comes in, we don't have to give them the drive-through because now they're in a zone district that doesn't allow it.
Well, if they were continuing pharmacy, for example, then they would be able to continue that.
It would have to be a pharmacy?
Well, you want, typically it would be a like-for-like use.
But we wouldn't have the ability, because we've just made it Village Center Core, to say, well, we don't allow that anymore in the zone.
So if they tore that building down, then the new standards would kick in.
But as long as the physical location is there, it's non-conforming.
Well, again.
It, it would have to be the same type of use, so.
So it couldn't be Dunkin' Donuts with a tractor? Like also.
That would be.
They couldn't take the Bank of America property and somebody wants to build another bank on it instead of a Cumberland Farms, the bank couldn't have a drive-through?
Well, the bank right now lost its status because it's been vacant for two years.
Well, and they tore the building down.
Yeah. Right, you can't, if a, if a use is non-conforming and someone wants to sell the property. I, we had this happen in our town, there was a friend lease. And it was in a residential zone. And I kept trying to get the town to rezone it to business and they didn't do it. And the business would, for the non-conforming, for that two years, it would have had to have been a restaurant, nothing else, because that was a restaurant. And it ended up turning into a church.
But if you go, if you, CVS is there, drive-through, it's closed for two years, say it's closed for three years. for three years. Now that means that they have to adjust, no longer able to have a drive-through, right?
Correct. So if there, if that is something, then, right, then we would say that the drive-through would be, would not be allowed. But it can continue. I mean, again, if they're continuing the use, they, they can continue the, the drive-through. If, I mean, if they're not affected, when this, if this goes into effect, they're not affected, they can still operate their drive-through.
Today?
Or, or after May, May nineteenth, possibly, you know, if this gets adopted.
So it's, it's there as long as, even if two, three years go by, that building's vacant?
Well, again, two or three, if it's two years that it's vacant, then it must become a conforming use.
So now you have to take that all away, the drive-through would go away, and probably take the building down.
Right. That would depend on...
When I'm looking, when I'm looking at parking in the rear, I saw it in here, so all that means the building has to, okay.
Yeah. But if they don't tear the building down, they could still repurpose the building, but the drive-through, if it's beyond two years, the drive-through is more than likely not allowed.
Right, but when I see the parking in the rear, that's another requirement, I think I saw it on one of these.
Yeah, if you're redeveloping a site...
But that's tearing it down.
Tearing it down.
Yeah, okay.
Right, this is, a lot of these standards are when you're tearing the building down, or if it were vacant, but the only site that was vacant is the Cumberland Farms, so...
Yeah, okay. So, so again, if, if Walgreens goes out of biz, decides to close up shop, and Bank of America wanted to come back, they could not utilize that drive-through?
Or could they? I need to, I'm gonna need to confirm that. My thought is probably not, because it's a change of use.
Change of use.
That would be a change of use.
Okay.
So if it's a change of use, if it's not considered a change of use, but going from, you know, from a, you know, from a pharmacy to a bank, I would think that triggers a change of use. I mean, typically, it would have to be a like-for-like, so if it went from one bank to another...
Yeah.
That wouldn't trigger a change of use.
So if Walgreens went out, but Walmart Pharmacy came in...
Yeah, I would say that wouldn't trigger it, right? So that would be a change, that would not be a change of use.
So, I understand how all of this works. And if we were playing SimCity, this would be really easy, right? But all of these properties already have stuff on them, and they're already defined sizes. So I'm just trying to understand the transition, how we go from five thousand to ten thousand square foot lot sizes, from eighteen thousand to sixty thousand square foot lot sizes. How does that work?
Well, it happens when a developer or a property owner wants to rebuild the property. So again, I don't think any of this is gonna happen overnight, but again, when the sewer comes in, there's, usually, when you have water in sewer, that's, that oftentimes is, you know, stimulates growth.
And there'll be property owners that won't wanna pay for the hookup, so they'll sell instead, and all of that.
Right, so, but what would happen then is if someone comes in with a plan, goes to the planning board, and says, we're gonna tear down this building, and we're gonna rebuild it with this, that's a trigger for them to have to now meet the new standards.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be, if nothing changes, you know, if you're, if you own a business, and five years from now, your business is still operating fine, and you haven't made changes, this doesn't, this doesn't affect that.
And then for things like the design standards, how does it work if you are a property owner that wants to do some sort of major renovation? If I, you know, if I'm Wendell's, and I wanna completely gut my interior and renovate, am I then obligated to meet the exterior design standards?
Now, I don't think, if it's just a renovation, remodeling, that wouldn't trigger this. I mean, Chris, no, it wouldn't, right? So if they start to expand, that may be...
Right, if they wanted to put on an addition or something, then maybe.
Yeah, that potentially could. We'd have to try to work with them on it, but renovations, no.
Okay.
No, so I think you're really looking at when, our intention was, you know, when properties...
Turnover.
Get demolished, demolished, and then rebuilt. So I don't want, you know, I'm gonna show you some pictures here, but again, we have to realize that this stuff takes a lot of time, and, you know, and market conditions will have a great effect on it. But we're just trying to make sure we put standards in that that's what the community wants. I see someone, I don't, there's someone raising a hand, I don't know if...
I just have a question. Would it be mandatory for all new development to tie into the sewer?
Ah, that's a question for the water and sewer department. This doesn't change that, but I don't know what they're, what the water departments...
Yes.
Is that a...
I think ultimately, it's a yes.
Yes, okay.
What about existing buildings, existing businesses?
I thought you had a time plan.
Existing ones we're gonna have to tie into. Now, would it be mandatory?
You have so many years, I thought, but eventually you do have to tie in.
Five, I think we put on, I think it was five.
How come the Village Center Core doesn't extend too far beyond 140 in the opposite direction? Is that because of our, is it state road versus...
No, it, it, it was driven by what it was currently zoned. Once you get out of this area, really, these are the properties right on 123 and 140, but as soon as you go north, again, these, the two properties, Ms. Dooley's property and the library are zoned residential sixty. We really were trying to minimize that, because, and once you get north of the, the library, it's housing.
Right.
So we just didn't wanna touch that. And we wanted to just take a smaller bite at this in the beginning, too.
I'm more met in the opposite direction on 123.
Wheaton.
Towards the, it's just basically...
Torts Town Hall and the library.
That's all Wheaton?
And those are the buildings?
Yeah, well, because that was largely Wheaton property, we didn't, again, it's something we could do. I think the bigger thing is we were just trying to keep a more manageable size.
On that side, there's no sewer. Once you go...
Yeah, true.
So the small lots wouldn't work, because they still need something.
So, again, the dimensional standards actually will allow more with Village Center Core than currently allowed under Village Commercial, so the buildings could be a little higher, it can be a little bigger, you can occupy more of the land. So like in a situation where someone now has a Village Commercial, they just want to, or Village Center Core, and they wanna add another building, this would give them more likelihood of it being approved, because like what they call building coverage is now expanded. So this is also set up, in terms of, when you think about walkability, the closer buildings are together, the more likely it is to walk. But Village Commercial, the way it was set up, was actually, it actually gets larger, and the lot size gets larger in size, the bigger the building is. So if you have, you know, two, a two-unit housing, it's a twenty thousand square foot, but if it's sixty, or six units, it grows to a sixty thousand minimum lot size. So we're trying to just shorten the lot sizes with it. And by doing so, too, it might give people, we think it would give more property owners, if they wanted to re-subdivide their property, a better chance to do so.
This is a dumb question, probably not related to you, more to Mike. If we were to adopt this, and you go to up to four stories, do our fire trucks, truck ladders, I mean, there are different sized ladders, can we accommodate four stories?
Well, a hundred-foot ladder.
You got a hundred-foot ladder, you're all set.
Yeah, and we have some buildings taller than this.
And obviously, as you go up higher, the design of the building has to take that into account, 'cause obviously, in Boston, a lot of trucks don't reach the top of the buildings.
Right, but, you know...
These new buildings will have standbouts and sprinkles when they're that big and they have that many stories, so that will come into play.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's, that's an important question. Yeah, that's, so as far as some of the design requirements, I'm just gonna go over this quickly again. It's, a lot of this focuses on what goes on between the front of the building and the street. But also, we're looking at stormwater systems, while they still have to meet their stormwater requirements for functionality. You could see some beautiful systems set up, and our hope is that we would get a system, rather than just a hole in the ground that stores water, that it could be, you know, more like an amenity, where you could think about having seats around it, that people could use it as, as a gathering place. Let's say if they had outdoor dining, and the water feature became a prominent part of it. Looking at lighting and signage, you know, we just want it at a smaller scale for people. Much of what we see on highways is for cars going by at thirty-five, forty miles an hour, so they're brighter, bigger, and so we're trying to reduce that. And another big thing is parking. Again, parking's crucial here. Parking to the rarer side of the buildings would be what we're trying to transition to. Parking in the front, again, causes conflicts if you're trying to walk or bike there, and if you're walking along it, too, and you just see a lot of cars, that can diminish it. Again, there's four properties, too, that are currently zoned residential sixty that we're proposing to rezone. Two of them, I've mentioned them already, the two properties right across from the Village Green. The reason we are proposing that is because they're right across from the Village Green. If they could redevelop into something like this, it could help, could help put more people at the green itself. So I've talked to Wheaton College, they didn't object to us proposing it. I've spoken to Ms. Dooley, she hasn't confirmed whether she wants it or not, although I'm meeting with the historic district commission, you know, about a week and a half. Hopefully, she'll tell me if she's okay with her property. Another one is going right behind Bog Iron. Oh, yes.
You keep mentioning Mrs. Dooley property. I have no idea which one that is.
My apologies.
Is it number two?
It's the two houses on the corner?
Is it number two?
Yes.
I didn't know what one was, okay.
Yes, that's, it's this...
Yeah, it's partial two.
The Dooley property.
We just work with her a lot, I assume, my apologies.
I get it now.
She can try to sell for a while.
I'm sorry.
It goes for sale often, it seems.
Well, and the other thing, like with that property, right, it's two houses, well, she actually did get this, she did. But when you think about how busy that intersection is, is that, would you want people living? I, you know, maybe someone does, but we need to see what her, what she would want. I mean, if she really objects to it, then I think we would be fine to pull it out. Another lot's right behind Bog Iron. It's a parcel that they're looking to acquire. They actually did a lot split right behind, you know, Bog Iron, I should put the map up, but they're looking as part of their expansion into their building, they need more parking, and so they're looking at land behind them to put additional parking.
Is it thirty-five?
Yes, yes.
Paul, this, this parking issue is my next question. One of the sort of, you know, common features of, you know, walkable, you know, downtown areas, and every street, and that you seem to show in your pictures here, well, not in the picture, but taken for granted in the picture, by the absence of driveways, is a communal parking.
Yeah.
Typically in the rear. Where you've got one place where you can get in and out, and then you get out, and you've now got walking access to...
Yeah.
Are there any rules about whether, where these lots, each lot is allowed to have its own driveway?
Yeah, actually, we do. But what we said was, we, in this area, we would, you know, they could do what we would say as of right, without needing a special permit. They could do one, if they want to go above, if they wanna do, do two driveways in this area, the planning board recommended that if they do, it has to be approved through a special permit.
So, but if each place is allowed to have its own driveway...
Yeah.
It will want it. If it's a business...
Sure.
You want people to be able to drive right into your business.
Yeah.
And if you're now, as you go along this street, every thirty feet encountering a driveway, you are no longer in this walkable, peaceable...
Right.
Shopping-friendly thing.
Right.
You are in a maze of, in a constant in and out, up and down the street.
Well, which is what it is now.
Which is what it is now.
And, again, it's a transition.
But it is not, it's an obstacle to where you're trying to get to.
Right. Our hope is that we will see more shared parking, and I know that's a challenge, but we should keep that open. And we have to ensure that sites have access to the road, so we couldn't prohibit someone. But in other, you know, other areas, where they were built a long time ago, they did have, they might have a shared driveway that they could use. We don't really have that situation, so, but we were, we wanna make sure that they're not proliferating on adding additional driveways at this point. Yes?
However, your lot size goes from eighteen thousand to sixty, down to five to ten, which means you're just gonna have, if everybody can have their own driveway, you're actually gonna have more.
We peppered with them.
You, you could, but if we go, if they...
I mean, you can't, because everybody gets their own driveway, then you're gonna have more.
But, and one possibility, again, I'm not saying this could absolutely happen, but if they're subdividing it, you do have the ability to figure out a way of, of trying to connect them with one access road, or one drive, I'm sorry, one, one driveway. Not saying it would absolutely...
But that's not a rule written in here.
No.
No, I mean, if I owned a big property, I could just sell each piece that I want to everybody else, and they make their own, but, I mean...
So some of the things we're also looking at doing, that we put in here, is to allow people to enter into contracts, park off-site within about eight hundred feet, as long as there's a safe crossing. So if they didn't need their parking, you could have an agreement to park elsewhere, and that way people could walk to it. But, yeah, the drive, the driveways are a big issue. It's, this is actually tightening up versus what we have now, because now, there's no limit, you know, you know, the code doesn't, the bylaw doesn't talk. It allows two, in fact, the Cumberland Farms has two access points, but we brought it up, but we weren't able to get an agreement to limit it to one. So we're not in a good situation now. I think this gets us into a better situation, and that's what we're trying to get to. We're trying to get to better, it, it, it's not perfect, but, but I think it gives us, these are important points, that I think as we, as this starts to go forward, we need to, you know, we would look at options for connecting, connecting parking, connecting parcels through a common driveway. In fact, oh, I should point out, one of the things we're doing here, too, is on a, with a common driveway, everywhere else in town, you have to get a special permit for a common driveway. A common driveway means you're connecting two, three, or four lots with one driveway. But one of the things we're doing here is, if you have a common driveway, you don't need a special permit for it. So we're trying to encourage the connectivity that way, too.
So one other question, so, in looking at the lots we're talking about, I guess, where do you foresee the new growth happening? We've got a sixty thousand square foot lot that the Cumberland Farms just going into.
Yeah.
They ain't moving anytime soon. You got CVS, CVS still closed.
Right, and it, it's in good condition.
You know, I'm just saying, I'm looking at the lots around there, and I guess where are we looking at, like, where, I guess, where are you looking at, where, where business is coming in?
This is a twenty or thirty-year plan, you gotta set the rules in place so that this can evolve over time.
Right.
This isn't gonna happen in five or ten years.
Right, okay. Yeah, again, we wouldn't expect that. We don't have the tools, but there are tools that can assess, that make estimations of when land could potentially change, looking at the price of the land and how much the building on top of it. I mean, you know, when price of land keeps going up and the building doesn't, you add onto the building, you tear it down. I don't know now. Okay. I mean, I could eyeball some of them and look at the condition and go, well, maybe that will, but I don't know. We just wanna make sure it's available when that time comes. I should also mention, the other lot that we had added is the Village Green, but please keep in mind, we're not selling it, it's staying as a park. The only reason it was put there was it connects, it's a, it makes the zoning contiguous with other things around it, you know, would take an extensive amount of effort to try to do it, and I don't know who would...
It'd take a tunnel or a bridge.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend it. We're not proposing to do that at all.
Couldn't even straight one forty for that thing.
Right, so, you know, there's differences between, oh, anyway, who knows? So here are some of the pictures. These are all just taken around this area, east, and this just gives you an example. I'm not gonna, the pictures tell you the story. not gonna, the pictures tell you the story. This is good, because this is a brewery in Pasco, Rhode Island, and that's actually some affordable housing that was built on top of it, and that's all within the last year.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and they actually, they have a community redevelopment authority, and they worked very closely.
That's Foxborough, that's Gold Street, that is, that binds in Foxborough.
Yeah.
And before that, used to be Foxborough Furniture for many years.
Right.
And I go to that, that place a lot of times.
Thank you, Peter. So, I'm just showing this to give an example of what a building near the park could look like. Now, I, you know, you don't see people out there, because I've taken these photos of the last few months, although I don't think it's been particularly cold, but we still stay inside. I'm hoping with the warmer weather, we can, I could go out and take photos and show people there, because we know people are here, but not when I was there. And again, if a building sets back, here are some of the things we could do.
Ooh, Pasco, Rhode Island, I've been there.
Yep, it's right on Broad, well, this is actually right off of Broadway. So, again, this is just where we are proposing to apply it. Just lastly, we have, we've scheduled two meetings in April for the planning board, for them to make their recommendation for town meeting, it'll be April seventh and twenty-eighth, and if need be, May fifth, but that's it, because by May seventh, it's, whatever's there is going to, going, going to.
Going to the town.
Going to the town, and if people want to change it at that point, do it on the floor. So, but we built, we built back from this, the process, so that we don't repeat mistakes of the past, so optimistic. And I should say too, that all of these proposed amendments, so when these folks talk about the marijuana, they're going on the same meetings as this as well. And can I just, just add, there was one other small bylaw change that, pardon the presentation, but we are currently required by our bylaw that if we do a rezoning, we have to put signs out in the ground. It's not a state requirement. It, it causes problems for us, because our bylaw says it has to be three weeks prior to the public hearing versus two weeks, and one of the reasons we had a problem in October was this rule, when they, when it just so happened, everything came in, we couldn't schedule the public hearing within the three-week period, so that got pushed back. So, I know, signs, most communities don't even put signs up anymore. There's many more effective ways of communicate. We still notice abutters, the property owners, we, you know, we're doing more of the video, we post it all over our social media, but we're proposing to eliminate that requirement to put a sign in the ground, and it also costs us. This particular one with, with our needing to put maps up and then all the changes associated with the marijuana overlay district is a pretty good hit on our little budget, and I don't think there's a whole lot of real benefit that comes out of it.
So, as an abutter, if I'm right next to it, I get notified.
Mm-hmm.
If I'm across the street, I'm not a abutting, so I don't get notified.
If you're, if it's outside of three hundred feet, yeah, so it's, it's three hundred feet, but yes, if you're outside of it, right.
Right.
And that's, that's our bylaw, that's.
I, I personally, you know, when those signs go up, then I know to pay attention. And, and, you know, if you're telling me to do social media, which I don't do, or other things, well, then I'm gonna miss it. So I personally like the requirement of a sign, because it gets my attention. That's just me.
Yeah.
But I'm totally against not doing it.
That's another article.
I am an old man.
Can you see the signs, like when you're driving?
I can't.
No, 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 I mean, they're not big, they're, it's not like they're big signs.
But you, you see them.
They're not billboards.
No, you see the little white.
It's on H-pack.
The white thing plastered on like a phone pole, it's like, hey, that wasn't there yesterday.
Are you putting it on phone poles? They're going in the ground, aren't they?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
A little like mom signs.
They're like our, like election signs, right?
Yeah, they're small signs.
Oh, they're smaller?
Yeah, plastic ones.
Yeah, but you, you do notice them.
You notice that?
Yes.
I don't want to be in front of you and you.
I've lived in this town for eleven years, and I can't recall having ever seen one.
That's the only way I see them.
We want people to keep their eyes on the road when they're driving.
I'm not saying I see the detail, I see the sign, which then, when.
He pulls over and takes it, so he can read it when he gets home.
Thank you.
He takes a picture of that.
I don't see them now, because it's not walkable yet, to drive.
Right.
So what if we just put white signs out around town, and then that would tell you, seek information elsewhere, to save printing money? Or just reuse them?
Well, and we're also, although I'm not sure now if this is going to happen with the coronavirus, but we are planning to do an informational session prior to the first planning board meeting, but that's looking a little more challenging now, so we're gonna have to figure out some potential options.
Come on into the studio and record it.
That's what we may do.
Yeah. And I just give your email, so people can send in questions.
Come in the studio and record it, that's right.
All right, so.
Hopefully it'll still go on.
We can have somebody do like a live Facebook and ask the questions, submit questions.
Good idea. Or maybe, Paul, just let me come to my house and, and, come to my house and we can do a Facebook Live right in my house.
So, Peter, are you supposed to?
Is that an idea, actually, Facebook Live?
So, anyway, that's, that's all I have, and I thank you for your great questions.
So the article is Article twenty-three, then Article twenty-four, the next article is the map amendment.
Yeah.
And then the next, what's that?
We've covered.
Covered it. My, my, when you were talking about it being amended on the floor, I kind of, I hope it doesn't happen, maybe a small amendment, but I would hope that, yeah, there isn't a lot of amendments.
Well, you know, we'll have, you know, a few opportunities, couple opportunities of the planning board to, for them, you know, to, to make those amendments, but our goal was to have them look at this early, which they did, and hopefully that will reduce major changes.
And if we can get the word out as much as possible about when the planning board is actually gonna be talking about these articles, so people can come there, so hopefully we don't have amendments on the town meeting floor, and hopefully people can come to the planning board and talk and see.
April seventh at the library, seven o'clock, seven fifteen.
If I remember, the amendments were made by the people, they were made by the planning board.
Well, they.
Let's not focus on the past. I think Paul and team have done a really good job of trying to get ahead and correct some issues in process.
But the public did weigh in on the village, on the master plan itself, so, on the village center, I'm sorry, the village center plan.
See?
And did you need a presentation?
I don't think so, unless, unless, there's a caller call coming around.
The next article is Article twenty-five in the warrant, it's concerning the establishment of a district around.
I am, yes. So the, the Industrial Development Commission has been working for several months, and I know we gave you guys some very fast overview at one of the joint meetings. Half of, half of the team is still behind us, a couple people ahead of us already, but I want to kind of, like, take a step back on this. One of the things that we talked about, you know, this is probably a little different than any of the other projects, that, that is from a planning work perspective, because this, this is really an economic development project, right? We're looking to see how, how can we increase our revenue, increase the tax base. So the IDC, I would say, September, and probably even earlier of last year, started to work on this, had a lot of conversation, a lot of meetings, the team really did a lot of work, and had some support from both Mike and, and, okay, I'm hearing ourselves, both Mike and Paul and others in this, so there's a lot of information here, but I'm gonna try to sum it up for you. Where we are now in the town, so two years ago, we voted to approve marijuana establishments in industrial areas. We didn't make any other conditions to that, we had an existing bylaw on registered medical marijuana dispensaries, which are now called medical treatment centers. That bylaw had a lot of conditions in it that, as of late, within the past couple years, there have been discussions on the legality of, of some of those things that we put in there. So what we did from our perspective is we really took a step back and said, what is right for the town, right? Not only from an economic perspective, but what do we, what do we want to see and how do we achieve it? And so the, the discussion went several ways. I can tell you specifically that we looked at every parcel within Norton, especially when we identified certain areas where we thought would, the industry would benefit from being there, and it was appropriate for the town to do that. So, a couple of things that, that we'll highlight here, you'll see on the actual overlay district, so the marijuana overlay district, two things have to happen in this, you'll see the diagonal areas, that's a specific marijuana overlay. The conditions that really have to happen that are outlined in the bylaw is, it has to be within a industrial, village, industrial, commercial, or village, commercial area with the overlay. So that's why, again, we went through every parcel, we had a lot of discussions, there were certain areas that, I kid you not, we talked about for over an hour, on whether or not it was appropriate, should it be within the overlay. So, you know, I, I just want to stress that there was a lot of thought going into this, it wasn't haphazard. The other thing that, that we looked at, as I mentioned, so our, our current bylaws allow us to put marijuana in any industrial area. We actually took out one of the areas. There's one by JCS that you'll see in the middle of the map, kind of where one twenty, the one twenty-three number is there. That, that actually by state regulations can't be included, because it's within five hundred feet of a school K through twelve. So that obviously is in, is in its scope, but like the Redden Barton area, right, we have this, this block of property that's industrial, it's really sitting in the middle of a residential area, we didn't feel that was appropriate, so it's not something that's included within the overlay. So those are some of the considerations that we had. What we were looking at specifically was, where do we have existing commercial business? Where does it make sense to put things? And, and when we talk about things for the marijuana establishments, it's not just the retail dispensaries, like, that's what everybody thinks about, but this includes cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, so other, other establishments within marijuana that are, you know, part of it. So some of the people that we've talked to, you know, they don't want to go, like, right in the middle of a commercial area. You know, they want to be in an industrial area, they want easy access to the highway, some of them don't care about access to the highway, so those were things that we considered when we went through here. And it wasn't that, you know, a lot of times, I think in this town, we see a project, and then we see some sort of zoning change, and it's like, well, we're making a change specifically for the project, right, not specifically for the town. We talked to many people in this industry, some are interested in coming here, some are interested in coming here, and we didn't make changes within the bylaw to accommodate that, because we didn't feel that, that we were really at that point. So we considered all of the requirements that they, that they had talked about, we considered some of the challenges that they had, some of the challenges that we've heard from other things, and did a lot of research on, you know, what was, what was not only happening across the state, but what really made sense here. So having said that, what I'd like to do is walk you through the, the map first, the visual overlay, just to, to kind of talk about some of these areas, and certainly, I know that this, this might be, for some of these, it's kind of difficult to look at, because we don't have, you know, it's based on the parcel, so you're just kind of looking at a parcel, so I, I can talk to what's there, and there are people behind me that probably can talk better what's there, so if we have to have some of them come up, we can certainly do that. But any questions before we kind of jump into what we're looking at? Okay, yes.
So you'll, you're gonna go over like which sections you talked about, because this is confusing, man, I can't tell what a slash and a dash, there's a lot of lines in there, man.
But this time, I gave it to you in color.
Yeah, I know, yeah, the color helps, but.
Thank you to the Sawyer Family Printer.
Anytime.
Lot of ink and color.
It's a laser printer.
So the slash mark is a specific marijuana overlay, the color are the existing zone districts. So the, the red up by the Route one forty north is commercial, and then purple is the industrial. And then, it's hard to see here, but by the one forty north on the right side of that, that's a village commercial, it's a light pink.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. So when we initially looked at this, I think we had eight or nine different areas, is it nine areas that we had to go? Nine areas? It was eight or nine areas that we had scoped, and we ended up dropping that down, and then we had a survey that helped us with some of the, the design on this, so then it took us down to the five areas that you see here. And they were nice enough to name them too, so it kind of made sense. So if you go into the, the second page, the first area that, and this is really probably from our discussions, one of the prime areas for potential businesses to come in, but this is the area that we've identified as Route one forty north, and that is the area by Albertos, has a Cumbes up there, the former Mini Golf area, so it's, it's right on the line of Mansfield and the Xfinity Center. So a really good area from a perspective of, there's a lot of commercial industry there, thinking specifically for a retail dispensary, right, it can handle the traffic in that area, you can leverage some of the other services there too, some of the other companies, so we felt that that was a really viable option. And you'll see through here too, like, if you look at the main map, we, we really focused more on the outskirts of town, so what was kind of easy into Norton and easy out, and that's, you know, from a, a perspective of the dispensaries, that's really what they're looking for, right? They don't want to be buried into like a, the center of town. One of our discussions with Paul while we did this was whether or not the Village Center, the Village Core Center, did I say that right, Paul, or am I backwards?
Village Center Core.
Village Center Core. Whether or not it actually allowed marijuana, and, you know, in their discussions, it did not, which actually fit with really what we were looking at, because, you know, we didn't want to, one, the traffic there is awful, but we didn't want to really have that, allow that within the center of the town. So we extended that down into the village commercial area, you'll see in the pink there, and it's, it's right by the Res, and again, we looked at, we did a lot of drivys and really looked at what was there now, and where we felt that it made sense.
So it's basically from Res of West Street North?
Yes. The second area is the East Main Street Business Parks, so this is the area right now that's under construction, the industrial, the condine area there, that's all the, the purple, and then the section that's commercial, so this is, this is a little odd, and one of the reasons, again, why we went through parcel by parcel, because as we know, and I think, maybe Tom, you alluded to it, right, we have patchwork zoning in town, so Red Mill Village is here, and Red Mill Village is zoned as commercial, but we, we specifically excluded it, because it's used for folks who are living there. Same thing with the East Main Street apartment. So the, the spot in right there, that commercial area, that's the area where the Dunkin' Donuts is, and what else is there? The liquor store, and then in the back, there's like a personal best, and that. And then the area up top, the industrial color, the purple area there, that's where like Bernie and Phil's, and that is that, that was, that's currently in our zoning right now, but we did include the overlay in that section too.
So, cool question.
Sure.
So the, the sections that are in purple, they currently can.
They can.
They can, right? And so you're including what they can now, and then you're adding to it some of the commercial ones?
Yes, yeah, with the exception of that one area in the center of town by JCS, that's zoned industrial, even though it's zoned industrial, and our bylaw allows for it, the state requirements do not.
It's by JCS.
It's, yeah, it's by, so if you go back to the first page, kind of in the center, you'll see the, a purple close to a square, maybe more rectangle.
The JCS, the Y.
The Y, you mean the Y, you kept saying JCS, but that's why you're, that's.
The JCS is way over here. No, there's a purple, there's purple near the JCS, too.
There's purple near the JCS, and then there's something.
It is.
What's, what's the?
Oh, yes, that's right.
What's the big purple right center?
Right across the street from the golf course.
Yep. So, so the requirement is five hundred feet, right, from the end of one parcel to the, to the edge of the next parcel?
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that's why I went, when we, we actually picked back up on one twenty-three outside of that area.
Yeah. What is that? Is that like where Mack and Waltz is?
It's a TJ Holmes building.
No, Mack and Waltz is on the other side of JCS.
It's almost, it's almost the North Wister.
Yeah. Right across from the, you don't even notice.
Oh, there's North Wister, okay, I got you.
It's gotta be right next to.
It's gotta be right next to.
North Wister?
Which is right next to you.
I know.
If that's North Wister, then that's gotta be Oak Street.
It's, it's south, going east, west.
Whatever it is, you're not gonna be able to get marijuana there.
Right.
Yeah, good.
It's not on the overlay. And you have to go to the store.
There goes our plans next week.
Right. Yeah, it is surprising. Well, there's, you know, again, it's, it's surprising. So, the other thing that we found that we had to count for in the bylaw was we have parcels that are half industrial and half residential or half commercial and half residential. So, we had to be specific that if they're in one of those areas, they had to be within the commercial or the industrial property and on the overlay, right? Like you can't preface to the residential part of that parcel. So, there's a lot of that in town. So, again, like we had these, you know, proposed language to make sure that you're very clear on where you can, you can't go. On the next page, the Norton Commerce Center, so this is the current industrial park. At the, that is Washington, South Washington Street? So, again, it's, this is a, an area that's already zoned for marijuana. We just applied the overlay to it. The next one under that is the industrial zones in South Norton. So, this is what I would call part of the Peace Mill area. If you look on the far right side where the purple is in the overlay, you'll see a section that has purple, but there's no overlay applied because it's Winslow Farms and it's, there are three homes actually sitting on the left side of that. So, we didn't include those, we stopped it right at, I can't remember, remember the street that that is? I can't remember that street.
Is that off of John Scott Boulevard?
Eddie? It might be Eddie, I don't know. I'm so used to having, I'm so used to having the map up, up next to me. Is it Eddie Street?
John Scott turns into Eddie, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, we looked at, you know, primarily what was, what was sitting on that, that roadway there. And then again, we extended down where the industrial properties are, continued on towards Attleboro. And you'll see there too, how the, how the overlay, like this is a big section too, where you have, it's partial industrial and partial residential on there. But it's applied, the overlay is applied to that parcel. So, we, we wanted to be specific about where you actually could put it because there's only a section in there that's purple that you can actually have any sort of marijuana establishment. And then the last section, are there any questions on those two?
Yep, sorry.
Sure.
Back where, where the railroad tracks crosses John Scott Boulevard, what's in there? I can't tell what's in overlay and not in overlay.
The pink part?
It's purple. It's here on John Scott Boulevard and you run into, before the, it's right around, it's industrial, so it's where the.
That's where the heat treat plant is. Right across the man, right across railroad tracks, there's a heat treating plant, Reliable Heating.
Oh, right around there?
Right, yeah. And there's also process.
Processor.
And South Shore Woodwork.
South Shore Woodwork. So, are those, those included in, you can or can't? I can't tell if, with the slashes, that, is it purple with no overlay? I can't tell if there's no overlay there.
Where are you? Oh, your, your thing kind of printed out a little differently. The overlay is, it is not from the, it looks like it's the parcel city. Can you look at this?
Here, right here.
Can you show us what you mean here? Right there, yeah. I think that may have been one of the weirds.
If you were coming on John Scott Boulevard. Before you ever get to South Wister.
Right, it's a, it's a weird shaped parcel. And the ones, the ones to the left of it are not within the overlay. It's the ones that are on the street itself, right? That was another one of the weird.
Yeah, that's where we cut it out, like.
From the railroad tracks.
Thank you.
I don't mind saying that because I'm an owl.
Any other questions on that? Without breaks, it is hard if you want to.
So, is the overlay on, if I'm going from John Scott and Eddie Street was behind me and I'm going towards 123, just before I hit the railroad tracks, is the stuff on the right where the guy has some mulch stuff and some whatever?
There's a reliable, reliable heat treat.
Yeah, whatever that building does, it does mulch, yeah.
They heat treat parts.
Okay, that place? So, that is part of the overlay on the right, but not on the left where the?
Right, well, on the left is also the woodworking place.
No, it, it looks like the, the, right in the front, the parcel's on the street if I, if I'm.
Yep.
Reading you correctly, reading it correctly, are we talking about right here?
Yeah, if that's the end of John Scott Boulevard, the railroad tracks.
Yeah, this is, so one of the things that we asked about, yeah, right here, right? So, so if you're going down the street, it's, it's the parcel's on the street, but not beyond that.
Yeah.
Both sides.
Both sides?
Both sides.
Okay.
If you're talking about like right here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay. But they are in the overlay.
They are in the overlay, yeah. Well, it's hard because the parcels, right, are coming, the parcel lines are coming out.
Yeah.
So, it, it almost kind of blends with the diagonal.
Yep, okay. Sorry, I don't.
No, no, that's okay. And, and we have, so we have a couple of things. We have the overlay, I don't know what was provided to you electronically, but we have the overlay, we have the parcel list and we have the bylaw. So, we can make sure you guys have all three of those together so that you can take time and look at it because obviously this is a lot to, to digest.
Electronic would be great because.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's, we're gonna be posting it up on the Planning Board website as well. I'll try to get that up there.
This is, this is where I'm pointing. This is the railroad tracks and this is South Shore Mill Works and this is the tracks. South West Street comes John Scott Boulevard and John Scott comes Eddie Boulevard and this process general contracting.
Good, thanks Peter.
Welcome.
And then the last district on the last page, titled the Industrial Business Zones in Chartley. So, those are heading out of town. You'll see certain sections are, are in the overlay. This is, this is where that 500 foot, it's not affirmative, I can't think of the right word, but the 500 foot requirement was, and so we shifted the overlay to where it was appropriate. But again, focusing on keeping it, you know, on the main, main area where commercial properties are. And this is zoned a little differently too. So, these particular parcels look like they're half industrial and half commercial.
So, this section of town is starting at basically North Wister on the right side and heading west on 123 towards Attleboro?
Yes, yep.
She kind of starts at like that van company on the right.
The van company on the right.
And across the street is like a.
The old pet food place or whatever they, like, used to be a Pets of Life.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Some kind of marine and then the dog.
So, and it might be, watch where the line is too, I believe, if I remember how this parcel line is, right on the right side of it, it's actually within that 500 foot from the school, which is why you kind of have an open gap coming around the bend.
Yeah.
Because of where the, the edge of the parcel is. So, we went beyond that to start the overlay.
So, it doesn't include the food place?
So, no left for Tavern on the Hill?
No, nothing on the Tavern on the Hill, right.
You can't have, I don't think you can have alcohol and marijuana together anyway.
You can.
I mean.
I heard you said, whatever.
I see a yes vote right there. Okay, if I can, any questions on the, the visual? Thank you, Michael.
I have one question about the last one we just talked about. So, there's definitely three properties on the road, but they really are but the development back there, man. That's really close to people's houses, even though it's commercial. It's really close.
It is, and you know, one of the things that we talked about was in respect to this, right? It, it is commercial property.
Yeah.
The other thing too is, you know, we're looking at access from the main road.
Yeah.
So, not looking to bring anybody behind, you know, any, any sort of a residential area.
People knew they moved next to commercial or industrial area.
So, the short is, we're looking to expand this from the industrial into commercial areas, is what it comes down to. Right, it's in, it's industrial, so trying to expand it to the commercial.
To, to specific, yeah, to specific commercial areas. Because I mean, we have, we have sections, sections in town that, you know, while there's zone commercial, when you drive through, there are houses there that we did not even consider.
Right, right. No, I'm not saying all commercial, I'm just saying some commercial.
Exactly. I mean, what we focused on again was the business, right? So, we're looking at commercial areas, we're looking at the industrial areas that we already had, but being more specific on what industrial areas do we want.
It's, so it seems like what they've done is they realized there is no combination of the existing zoning that you can piece together to make it really ideally work, right? You can't say, you know, commercial and industrial or only industrial, only industrial doesn't work. We like, it or isn't optimal.
Right.
All right, so this is just some commercial, some industrial.
Another franchise.
We consider to be appropriate for marijuana.
Yep.
Of the parcels that have been selected, are there any limitations for cultivators? Meaning certain lot sizes and does that narrow down the scope of this if a cultivator wanted to come in here?
It would depend, so we've, we've talked to a couple. I mean, it would depend on the size of the building, right? So, they still have to go through a special permitting process. That's really what the bylaw focuses on, that any marijuana establishment has to go through special permitting.
Okay, but overall, we've selected X number of parcels.
Mm-hmm.
If you were to look currently, the way it is today, cultivators need X lot size, is that?
No, it's not because some, so one of the things that we talked about too is, we talked about splitting it into like a, kind of a dispensary overlay and then everything else overlay. The problem is, is that some of the businesses, especially the, the smaller ones, right? They have a, a small cultivation facility behind them with the retail in front or they might have, you know, cultivation, manufacturing behind. So, you can't say that cultivation specifically wants something, but we had, we had somebody talk to us. They were looking initially for something 15,000 square feet and then they went from 15,000 to 20,000 to 100,000. And they were actually in negotiations with another town of 100,000. They had a building picked out and everything and then that town kind of, for lack of a better term, just got cold feet, right? Like they, they decided to go a different way. So, when you're, you know, it's, it's hard like to look at this and say, well, where can you go? And really what we're saying to them is based on your requirements, you need to find where you can go, but we've now provided you with an area.
And those that are interested, are they dispensaries, cultivators, combination?
Combination. So, we have, so one of the things that we're planning on doing at the info session is having a panel. So, we'll have, and we asked that each of them that came, if they would be willing to participate in the panel. And it's more for just a, a conversation of, you know, what are challenges that they have? What do they do? What's their business do? So, we have, we have a cultivator, we have a couple folks who want dispensaries, distribution, which is actually an existing business in town. What am I missing? Manufacturer, it's, the manufacturer and cultivation is the same, the same, the same company that we talked to. One of the companies that are interested in a retail dispensary here, they actually have all of those things somewhere else. So, we, we, we went the gamut because we wanted to talk to everybody. We talked to somebody too who, he has a very different vision and it's something that we are not accommodating within the overlay. He was looking for like a bed and breakfast type, type service where they would, like a farm to table, right? So, he would actually have about an acre of marijuana and then they would take that marijuana and they would use it, you know, as part of, as part of the experience for the bed and breakfast to cook. Yeah, it was actually, everybody liked the idea. He had a really nice property, 37 acres that he looked at and it was, you know, in a residential area. And we just didn't feel right now that we weren't in the place that we, we need to be in for that, you know? So, that's one that we, it was great talking to him to understand, you know, what they're looking for, some of the challenges. Obviously, our concerns were things, you know, people getting in their car, going to Xfinity Center and they had, you know, that was obviously part of their, their business model was to account for that and make sure, essentially it's like we're taking keys, you know, when people show up.
And what goes with that? Any projections on revenue?
So, we will have these folks talk about that. So, we, we have received some figures based on the, the cultivator that we've talked to. They actually have a fairly large business up in Maine. So, he's given us some specific figures like per pound of marijuana that they would get. The other thing too, which you'll see part in the bylaw and there's also a host community agreement is, as part of the meeting that we did two years ago, we approved a 3% excise tax. On the agreement, there's a 3% community impact fee. That impact fee is very specific about what you can use the funds for. So, it again, is based on impacts to the community. So, whether it be traffic or if it's, you know, training, you can do, yeah, public safety. So, those are things and the state has very specific requirements about making sure that you track that money. So, there's, you know, in addition to bringing in potential, you know, especially if it's on a piece of land that's not developed right now, right? We have real estate tax and then on top of it, we have these other opportunities too.
So, are there any restrictions if a cultivator wanted to come in? A cultivator who does it inside versus a cultivator who just wants, you know, strip the land down and just plant? So, inside versus outside cultivation, is there any?
So, the state has very specific guidelines, especially when it's outside, based on height of fence, security. They're very strict on the security and Chief Clark has been involved. He actually reviewed the host community agreement. We're hoping that he'll participate in the info session as well to give his opinion and he's talked to, in the city that I can never remember the name, they opened up the first pot shop and he, he talked to the chief up there really to talk about, you know, what issues did you have? And he, yes, and he actually came to the selectmen, maybe two months ago, I think? And, and so he was talking about it where he said, you know, everybody thought like this is what's gonna happen, like you're gonna have voiding, you're gonna have this, you're gonna have that, and it didn't happen, right? They certainly had their, their, their traffic problems in the beginning. One of the things that even though, you know, traffic, especially with the dispensaries right now, is less of an issue because they are, they're popping up, you know, in more places. So, with the, the, the traffic has been a bit mitigated from that, but we still accounted for that within the bylaw and within the host community agreement that there, if there is a problem, we make sure that, you know, the company's gonna address it and they're gonna pay for it. So, if they need police details or whatever, that's something that's gonna be on them. We don't feel like it's gonna be an issue, but again, we wanted to make sure that we built that in here. So, we had recourse if we needed it. The other thing that you should know just within the bylaw specifically, so we identify the number of licenses that the town can have. So, the state has a requirement that you have to have at least 20% available based on the number of, like, package licenses? I, I don't know the correct terminology.
Liquor licenses.
Liquor store licenses. So, we stayed with that 20%, so that would give us two within the town for retail dispensaries only. That's the only one that requires it. For the others, if we had 10, 10 manufacturers come in here or 10 distribution centers, we can have, we can have all of them in town if we wanted to. There's, there's no restriction. But on dispensaries, we did cap that. Again, we felt that was really where the town was right now, that we didn't, we didn't want to go any higher than that. Even though if you look at the diagram, I mean, you know, they're focused on easy access. I think we have three areas of easy access, the 140 North, the East Main Street Business Park and the Norton Commerce Center, right? All on the edge, all with easy highway access. But we limit it right now to two and we can always come back and, and change that in the future if we find that, you know, we have a couple go in, there's no problem. And I'm sure by then that the, the industry is gonna be quite different anyway and they're gonna be like the liquor store, right? There's not gonna be the hype around it that, that there is right now.
Any feedback from the other towns, surrounding towns, our surrounding towns?
On, on how it's been for them?
Because everything's gonna be pretty much abiding a lot of their.
No, we haven't reached out, but I mean, you know, I think it's, is it Attleboro right now that's putting one in pretty close to the district that we have outlined?
I'm just thinking of the, what was it, U-Haul or, what was up there on the industrial side, Mike? They had a lot of back and forth.
Say that again.
What was it, the U-Haul or the Ryder?
Ryder.
Ryder, there was a lot of back and forth about Totten not wanting him going through the railway and, okay.
No, you had waste management.
That's what it was.
By the L Street.
I think the retail establishment in Meersville is in the.
It's in, is it in Meersville Crossing?
Meersville Crossing.
Yeah, but it's in Meersville and the main contributory is in Meersville.
They didn't come ask for our opinion.
Yeah, no, just curious.
Yeah.
But it's not, also not a spot in us.
Oh, no, it's, it's very close.
Right.
The information will be available online. We can certainly do a self touch.
And the other towns will be notified too.
Any other questions? I wanna, let me just take a quick peek. Through here, you'll see again, site plan approval, special permit approval. We met with the planning board and they had a subcommittee that we worked with on this as well. We haven't formally presented to this. We literally got this back from town council today with the final clean version. But we have them on our schedule. We couldn't make it to their meeting last night because they had a full agenda, but we'll be working with them as well. But we've incorporated their input, had a lot of discussion with them. They were, they were really helpful to us early on specifically and, and, you know, having considerations that we need to take, to take back to the, to the group. Let me just see if there's anything else that's, I don't think that there's anything. Is there anything else that is of significance to mention within the bylaw? I think just the licenses. And so, oh, I should talk about this. So, one of the things that we recently started to do based on council, council's advice is come up with an application process. One of the concerns from the planning board was what happens when we only have two licenses and we get, you know, multiple permits? How, how do they stack it? So, town council suggested to put in an application process that goes through the board of selectmen. So Town Council suggested to put in an application process that goes through the Board of Selectmen, so we are, we are developing that now to take to the Board of Selectmen for the recommendation and approval, as well as we work with, we had, Mike had a host community agreement template